Good morning, please take your seats. It being 9:00 AM on the 5th of March 2024 in the town of Richmond, I call this 229th Annual Town Meeting to order. Would you all please stand as a scout BSA from Troop 23 present the colors and the Pledge of Allegiance?
Call guard, attention! Call guard, forward march! Call guard, halt! Call guard, cross the colors. Call guard, post the colors. Call guard, turn to ranks.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Would you all please join me in a moment of silence to honor those that have served and are currently serving in the armed forces to protect the freedoms that we have today? Thank you. If we have any... There we go. If we have any first-time voters joining us today, would you please be...stand to be recognized, any first-time voters? Not today, okay. And I understand we might have some folks from AmeriCorps that are here. There they are, welcome. Hopefully you'll...they're here to observe our democratic process, so hopefully we'll all learn something today. So I'd like to go over some House rules. There's no food nor drink in the gymnasium. And a large item here today is lunch is back. It is available from the community service center at a nominal cost. It will make some arrangements during the meeting. It's a little bit tricky on timing sometimes as to when we break for lunch, but we'll figure out how that goes as we go along with this meeting. I'd also please ask you all to turn off your cellphones or at least put them on vibrate such that there's not that interruption. So some procedures I'd like to go over that have been in use for some time, but bear repeating such that we're all on the same page. This meeting will be conducted using Robert's Rules of Order, except where they are superseded by Vermont state law. All remarks and motions should be directed here to the moderator. Remarks are to be confined to the merits of the question. All articles must be moved, seconded, and restated by the moderator before discussion can begin. All motions and amendments are to be made in the affirmative; that helps with clarity. Non-voters may not speak except by suspension of the rules, which requires a two-thirds vote in the affirmative. I will try to anticipate this by asking for common consent, such as unless there's an objection, we'll allow Person X to speak. This sometimes comes into play with town employees that don't live in town or nonresidents who might have some expertise. Non-voters may not vote by voice vote or by any other means. If this becomes a problem, some type of segregation will need to take place such that their voice cannot be part of our deliberation. Voting on an article will be first by voice vote, then by hand or by standing if necessary, and then we always have the opportunity in which to have a paper ballot at any time per state statute. That requires seven voters to call for a paper ballot. All articles can be amended, and the amendment may be amended once. I would ask the maker of any amendment to present it to me in writing such that it can be read to the assembled. Please make...again, please make any amendments in the affirmative so that it is clear and You need to ensure that any amendments are germane to the original article. It can't change the intent substantially. An amendment must be reasonable to achieve the purpose of the warned article. There is no re-vote on an article once we have declared the vote and the next article is announced. So, a word on Australian ballots. Changes in state law in 2008 allows for discussion of warned articles at town meetings with the exception of voting on town or school officials. As this precedent has been set, the voters have the right to ask for this discussion, not the select board or school board nor the moderator. I would ask for a motion to discuss this Australian article. We'd have the discussion, and then I'd entertain a motion to cease discussion. With this process, you all are making the choice of whether to discuss the article. That's on Australian ballots. Of special note this year, and I refer, there are some changes in the article this year, and I think the town manager's presentation will touch on this a little bit, but of special note, Articles 4 through 11, which are the social services or the charitable appropriations. Upon advice from the Vermont League of Cities and Towns and the town attorney, the select board has moved the appropriations to separate articles. Previously, they were all approved by the select board and then included in the general budget, but based on advice from the attorney and the VLCT, those have now broken out. When we get there to those eight articles, there...we have some ideas. It will be up to you guys how you decide to do it. We have some ideas to present that might simplify things. Now, on the advisory article, Article 14, again, the select...oh, I've seemed to have lost my microphone. Can I have my microphone back? Regarding...okay, you can hear me now, okay. Regarding Article 14, the advisory article, the select board has placed this article in the warning in which to have a discussion and a vote for advisory purposes. And we'll get to that. Can you hear me now? Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Could the balloting...could you keep it down back there in line? Denise, could you please have all the folks kind of lower their voices back there? Thank you. Okay, just a few more things how we run the meeting. When the moderator recognizes you, please stand and state your name for the minutes. There will be...some of the scouts will be roaming around with microphones, so it may take a little bit of time for us to get to you, but in that way, we can make sure everybody is heard. The maker of the motion has a right to speak first, then citizens have the opportunity to speak twice on a motion. Robert's Rules does provide a time limit of 10 minutes for speakers, so if needed, I will remind the speaker of the elapsed time. Okay. On calling the question, traditionally, in the town of Richmond, we allow the courtesy to all who wish to speak once to get to do so. In order to call the question, you need to be recognized by the moderator. At that point, all discussion must cease. It does require a two-thirds majority, and I may have to divide the House for counting Under the last article of Other Business, this is where resolutions and other non-binding articles are discussed. If you have something that is appropriate for Article 15, please bring it up to me in writing such that we can read that. There are town reports up here in the front in various places. We are being recorded by MMCTV today, thank you very much for that. And I was told also, if you're looking for seats, there's plenty of...just like church, there's plenty of room up front, so don't be bashful in which to do that. Okay, having said all of that, I will now ask the town clerk in which to please read the warning.
The official warning for the annual town meeting, March 5th, 2024, of Richmond, Vermont. The legal voters of the town of Richmond, Vermont, and the legal voters of the Mount Mansfield Unified Union School District residing in Richmond are hereby notified and warned to meet at Camel Sump Middle School in said town on Tuesday, March 5, 2024, at 9:00 AM to transact the following articles. The voters are further warned to meet at Camel Sump Middle School in said town on Tuesday, March 5, 2024, when the polls will be open at 7:00 AM in the forenoon and close at 7:00 PM in the afternoon to vote the following by Australian ballot. All town officers and Mount Mansfield Union Unified School District school directors. Article 1, to elect school and town officers for the terms posted on the ballot. Article 2, to hear and accept reports of the town officers. Article 3, shall the voters of the town of Richmond approve a budget of $4,819,779 to meet the expenses and liabilities of the town of Richmond in fiscal year 2025. Article 4, shall the voters of Richmond vote to appropriate $500 to the Vermont Family Network to provide support to Richmond families whose children are with special needs, such amount being reasonably necessary for the support thereof. Article 5, shall the voters of Richmond vote to appropriate $3,500 to AgeWell to provide support and guidance to town residents aged 60 years and older, such amount being reasonably necessary for the support thereof. Article 6, shall the voters of Richmond vote to appropriate $375 to Vermont Center for Independent Living for providing services to enhance the lives of town residents with disabilities, such amount being reasonably necessary for the support thereof. Article 7, shall the voters of Richmond vote to appropriate $1,000 to the Committee on Temporary Shelter to provide emergency shelter, services, and housing for town residents who are homeless or marginally housed, such amount being reasonably necessary for the support thereof. Okay, can't turn the page. Article 6, shall the voters of Richmond vote to appropriate $3,000 to our Community Cares Camp to provide enrichment and food services to children, internship opportunities for youth, job training and development for young adults for town residents, such amount being reasonably necessary for the support thereof. Article 9, shall the voters of Richmond vote to appropriate $1,500 to Steps to End Domestic Violence for assisting town residents who have been affected physically, sexually, emotionally, or economically by domestic abuse in the transition to a safe, independent life, such amount being reasonably necessary for the support thereof. Article 10, shall the voters of Richmond vote to appropriate $5,000 to Turning Point Center of Chittenden County to provide to town residents an inclusive compassionate community support, supporting those on multiple paths to recovery through peer-driven services in a safe, substance-free environment, such amount being reasonably necessary for the support thereof. Article 11, shall the voters of Richmond vote to appropriate $1,885 to Hope Works for their work to end all forms of sexual violence to town residents, such as an amount being reasonably necessary for support thereof. Article 12, shall the voters authorize renovating and making capital improvements to the town center building to address conditions affecting user health, safety concerns, example deteriorating windows, electrical, and HVAC systems, emergency egress deficiencies, and the absence of a sprinkler system, and to bring the building into compliance with flood-related zoning regulations, and to issue notes or other debt instruments in an amount not to exceed $9,841,603, for a term not to exceed 30 years, and the subject is subject to a reduction by grants and aid and other state and federal funds when available to the town for this purpose. Article 13, shall the town of Richmond vote to approve funding the Conservation Reserve Fund by adding 1 cent to the municipal tax rate in the 2024-2025 fiscal year. Advisory Article 14, shall the town of Richmond investigate developing housing on the town-owned property on Brown's Court? Article 15, to transact any other town business which may come legally before this meeting, and this is signed by members of our select board, Jay Fur, Bart Hill, David Sander, Jeff Ford, and Lisa Miller.
Thank you. Okay. Article 1 is to elect school and town officials for the term posted on the ballot. This is being voted on by Australian ballot, and as indicated, this is not a debatable item, so... I'm sorry, Denise? Okay, the town clerk needs to assist, okay.
I'll assist.
Very good. We'll carry on without her. So, Article 2, to hear and accept the reports of the town officers. Do I have a motion in which to bring Article 2 onto the floor? I need a motion? Is there a second? Seconded? Okay, it's been moved and seconded, so now it's open for discussion. This is where the public can ask general questions about anything in the town report. Are there any questions, comments on the town report? Okay, seeing none, are you ready for the question? Article 2, to hear and accept the reports of the town officers. All those in favor, so signify by saying aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. Article 2 is passed. Article 3, shall the voters of the town of Richmond approve a budget of $4,819,779 to meet the expenses and liabilities of the town of Richmond in the fiscal year 2025? Can I have a motion for...to bring this to the floor? Please stand and state your name. Moved? Is there a second? Seconded? Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. If there are no objections, I will let the town manager give a brief presentation. Is there a question? Yes, please. Yeah, please use a microphone.
I have a question. Can we have a paper vote for any monetary changes to the budget or any monetary adjustments to the budget?
If there's an amendment, yes. You and seven other voters can call for that, yeah.
Okay, great, thanks.
Any other questions before we let Josh do his presentation? Very good. Mr. Town Manager, you're on.
All right, good morning, everybody. My name is Josh Arneson, I'm the town manager. I've got a budget presentation that I'll go through. Projector's warming up, but hopefully it'll show up shortly. Before we get into the budget, I'd just like to thank the select board for their months of work on the budget. We start the budget in about September with staff putting together their requests for their departments. We then have separate meetings, one each in October, November, December, and usually again in January with the select board to review the budget, get feedback from the public, make changes to the budget, and then we finally finalize the budget for presentation to the voters, usually in mid-January. So thanks also to all town staff and department heads for putting a lot of thought into the budget for what their needs are for FY25, and thank you to those members of the public that provided feedback throughout that process, either by showing up to meetings that we had or providing feedback written to myself, department heads, or select board members. It's really important that we have a lot of public feedback so that by the time we get to today, we know we've had a lot of feedback from the public, and we're presenting a budget that we feel has been fairly well-vetted by the voters already. Joining me today, we've got our department heads and our finance director, so after I go through the presentation, if there are further questions...of course, there's going to be questions, but having the department heads here will help a lot. If there's a specific question about something in the planning budget, our planning director can probably answer that better than I can at times, so thank you to department heads for taking time to be at town meeting today. As I go through the budget presentation, you'll notice I put some page numbers on here, so I'd like to ask you to all hold your questions until the end of the presentation. Sometimes you might have a question that'll be answered two slides later, but if you do have a question, if you have a pen, jot down the page number. We can come back to any slide you want later on after the presentation is finished. Also, you'll notice I put page numbers at the top of some of the slides to refer to spots in your town report where that's discussed. So, try to tie this back into spots in the budget so you can take a look and see exactly what I'm talking about in the town report. So today's agenda, we're going to start with an overview of the FY25 budget. We'll take a look at municipal operations, which is the core of what the budget is supporting. We'll review the Conservation Reserve Fund. We'll discuss the social services that the moderator spoke about earlier. We'll review reserves and unassigned and restricted funds. We'll look at debt service, and then we'll review the budget by department, and then pause for questions. So I'd like to begin with a bit of an overview about the fiscal years. It can be a little confusing for folks that aren't in it every day. So the fiscal years are named with the calendar year in which they end. So the previous fiscal year was FY23. That ran from July 1, 2022, until June 30, 2023. Currently, it is fiscal year '24, which began on July 1, 2023, and runs till the end of this June, and the budget being voted on is for fiscal year '25 or FY25 that will begin on July 1 of this year and run until next June 2025. The tax rate as presented here and all the estimates that follow are based on the current grant list value as of July 2023. That is the estimated grant list value that was based on the last reappraisal that just got completed last year, so there will be some adjustments as we get into FY25, but there will not be as many adjustments as there were last year when we did a full-townwide reappraisal. The adjustments will come from things such as improvements to properties or properties that might have been changed significantly, so those will be known and voted on in July when the select board sets the final tax rate. Overall, spending is up by about $211,000 in this fiscal year's budget compared to FY24. By section, the general fund, which includes all departments except for highway, has an increase of $99,000. The highway fund is up by $111,000. This results in a 5.1% increase in the tax rate from fiscal year '24 to fiscal year '25. And again, these page numbers here, this is sections where you can find in your town report more details than any of these, and the number on the bottom is a note if you want me to come back to this at the end. So the municipal tax rate in fiscal year '24 was .4682. In FY25, it's projected to go to .4921, which is a .0239 increase per $100 of property value. This is the 5.10 increase from tax rate FY24 to FY25. So what that looks like for home value of $100,000, your current tax bill in FY24 would be $468. This would project to increase that by $24 to $492 per $100,000 value of your property. So knowing that very few properties are $100,000, we provided some estimates at $250, $500, and $750,000, so you can look there, kind of match up where your property value is, and get a good sense of where this budget would take the tax rate. A good reminder is that the budget we're voting on today is only for the municipal budget, and that is 29% of your total property taxes. The homestead education tax rate is projected to be 71%. That's voted on separately, so the vote today is just for the municipal side, which is about 29% of your total taxes, noting that education will be voted on separately. I look at budgets over the years, it's a fairly flat slope from 2011 up to 2025. We did have a little bit of an increase in FY23, and that was mostly due to the way that we were using reserve funds in that year. We had about $755,000 in the use of reserve and unassigned funds to make some large equipment purchases, which were all in the budget that year. They were all offset, or mostly offset, with use of reserves and unassigned funds. Since that time, we've rearranged how we put those into the budget, and they're actually on a separate sheet so they don't continue to be in the budget offset directly by revenues. So that's where it sort of spiked for one year and then came down, and now we're kind of back on that general slope. Taking a look at the budget allocation by department, you can see that the large blue piece on the left there or the right is the highway fund. That's about 41%. Obviously, lots of equipment, lots of staff, lots of materials go into maintaining the highways, so that's a larger portion of the budget. That's followed by administration at 17%, police at 15%, fire at 9%, library 8%, then planning and zoning, contracted social and health services, the assessors, and recreation. So now we'll go through department by department to give a bit of an overview of what each department does and how each department is constructed. So the administration department consists of the town manager, the finance director, the town clerk, an assistant town clerk, and an assistant to the town manager. They operate very closely to manage revenue, payments, payroll, policies, projects, and The police is...consists of a full-time chief, four full-time police officers, and one part-time administrative assistant. Currently, Richmond Police Department is a bit understaffed, and we have a contract in place for shared police services with Heinsburg. We'll talk a bit more about the police budget later in the presentation, but the budget as presented in the...budget as presented in the town report calls for four full-time officers and a contract with Heinsburg for shared police services going forward, or shared chief services. The fire department is consisting of a chief, an assistant chief, three captains, a lieutenant, and 14 firefighters. It's an all-volunteer department, but they do get paid for hours spent on trainings, meetings, and for response to calls. Planning and zoning has a full-time planning and zoning director, as well as a full-time zoning administrative officer. Their main duties are to support the Development Review Board, the Planning Commission, the Housing Committee, and several other committees related to planning. The highway department has a foreman, one assistant foreman, and four full-time drivers and operators. In the winter, you hear them out plowing the roads, salting and sanding all winter long, and they're also preparing for summer work. In the summer, they maintain the gravel roads, maintain equipment, maintain highways... the gravel roads, maintain equipment, maintain highways, respond to drainage work, maintain recreational facilities, work on larger sidewalk and stormwater projects, and also, when we have floods, they're responding to that and helping to make sure that the roads are put back together. The Library has a full-time Director, a full-time Assistant Director, with each working 32 hours per week, six part-time employees, a part-time substitute employee, and they're governed by the Board of Trustees, but the voters do approve the budget in this budget vote. The Water Resources Department is a department consisting of four employees, a Superintendent, an Assistant Superintendent, and two operators. That budget is not being voted on today. That's a separate budget, and it's only paid by the users or the customers, the Water and Wastewater Department. That will be voted on at the annual meeting of the Water and Sewer Users, which is going to be happening later in May. The budget will start to be discussed and developed by the Commission probably at the next meeting in March, and we'll work on that budget through April, bringing it to a final vote by the Water and Sewer Commission in May. But do want to thank the Water and Sewer Department for their work, tireless effort in the Water and Sewer Department. But a reminder that that budget is not being voted on today. If you're a customer of that system or would just like more information, the Commission meets the first and third Mondays of the month at 6:00. So now we'll transition into some items that can be added to the budget but are not in the budget as they're presented in the town report. So the Conservation Reserve Fund is voted on by Australian ballot every year. The question on the ballot is to approve funding to the Conservation Reserve Fund by adding one cent to the municipal tax rate in fiscal year '25. So the estimated contribution would be $78,162, and that's based on the grand list of $7,816,261. If that passes, the actual amount that's contributed to the Conservation Fund will vary based on the grand list as it is set this coming July. And so as presented with the current grand list, it would take the 5.10% proposed increase from FY24 to '25 in the tax rate, and that would go to 7.24%. So what that means is for every $100,000 in property value, it would go up $10 in taxes. I have a chart that we can look at there again. So for $100,000, the current tax is $468. If Conservation Fund passes, the increase would be $34. The previous chart, it was $24 in increase for the base budget. This goes to $34 for a new total tax bill of $502. A $500,000 property value would go from $2341, increased by $170 for a final municipal bill of $2,511. The other item that is a bit of a change from previous town budgets and town votes is social services allocations. In years past, the Select Board would go through a process to reach out and get applications from different organizations that service Richmond in one way or another. The Board would then put those into the budget, and they were voted on in the budget as part of the regular budget vote that you are all going to do here this morning. As we looked into that a little bit more for some more guidance, as the moderator mentioned, we were given the guidance from the attorney and from Vermont League of Cities and Towns that actually the correct way to do social service allocations is to take each one of those to the voters and have the voters vote on allocations directly. So that is the change that we've made today. Looking back to statute for guidance, the social services are defined in statute as such programs include, but are not limited to, transportation, nutrition, childcare, medical care, and other rehabilitative services for persons with low incomes, senior citizens, children, disabled persons, persons with a substance use disorder, and persons requiring employment to eliminate their need for public assistance. So as we looked at that, not all requests that we received fit into that category. So as we looked at this and reviewed it and consulted with our attorney, there were certain items that weren't a social service by definition but were still important and providing a service to the town. So those items were considered by the Select Board and put into different departments throughout the budget, and those are included in the budget. So what I'm going to do is first go over those requests that we got that are in the budget and in the total budget that's being voted on today. So items that we looked at that were not necessarily social services but still important to recreation and trails included Lake Huracan Association, the Richmond Community Band, the Richmond Farmers Market, Camel's Hump Little League, and Halloween on the Green. And again, you can find those on Page 16 of the town report under Recreation and Trails. Requests that were considered by the Select Board to be more related to police and moved into the police budget is the Chittenden Unit for Special Investigation. This is an organization of policing that deals with higher-level, more intricate crimes, and if any of those happen here in Richmond, this is the organization that would take those crimes and investigate them. Requests that were considered by the Select Board to not be donations but instead have a contractual obligation were moved to a new item called Contracted Social Services. That includes the Special Services Transportation Agency. There's an obligation by the Town of Richmond to provide transportation to folks with disabilities. So this is how the Town of Richmond and many other towns fulfill that obligation. This section also includes Community Outreach. This is an organization that we've partnered with, with the Howard Center. It's partnered up with police departments, so if the police get a call that's not necessarily police-related, but there's more social services they can connect those people with to help them with the problems that they're encountering, they can reach out to Community Outreach to get people connected with different organizations. This is also a program that anybody in Richmond can call. If you've got a need that you think could be met by a different organization, you can call Community Outreach, and they can connect you with an organization to help you through different problems. We also have the Williston Community Justice Center. This is an alternative forum, so if someone's arrested and rather than going through the court system, they can go to the Community Justice Center to work on a restorative reparative process between the victim and the perpetrator. I think I'm using the wrong term there, but anyway, you get the idea. For years, this has always been funded by a grant primarily from the Department of Corrections. It's housed in the Williston Police Department. The Williston Budget has always put money towards this, as well as they have some in-kind as far as staff location and office for them. They've never asked any of the towns for any contribution to this until this year. It primarily serves Williston, Richmond, and Heinsburg. So this year, and we'll get to it a bit later, there is an allocation for a portion of the funding for the Williston Community Justice Center. We also looked at a few that were health services, and we moved those to donations health services. That includes Richmond Rescue, that provides amazing ambulance services to the Town of Richmond, and the UVM Home Health and Hospice. There was a couple others that fit better in town administration, so the Greater Burlington Industrial Corporation is not necessarily a social service, but they're very important and helpful when we are applying for funding for larger projects. They can help support that funding and help us secure the funding through different grant programs. And then Mount Mansfield Community TV, MMC TV, has greatly expanded the number of meetings that they are recording and making available to the public on their website, including town meeting here today. There was a request that the Board looked at and determined was ineligible as a town appropriation and did not really fit into any other categories. There was a request by the Boy Scouts. I think it was mostly for a trailer that was going to be funded through the Holy Rosary Church. It didn't fit as a general social service and didn't seem to have a greater good that benefited everybody in the Town of Richmond, so that was not considered or put into the budget. So this year's social services, as I mentioned, there are eight of them that are on the ballot. The chart includes four through 11. So that's a total of $16,760. If those all pass, if everybody passes them this afternoon, it would increase $2.14 per $100,000 of property value. And just to kind of break this down, as you're considering social services later in the meeting and you want to know, you know, some of them are $500 or $1,500. Every $10,000 that's added to the budget adds about $1.28 of tax burden per $100,000 of property value. Every $1,000 adds about 13 cents of tax burden per $100,000 of property value. So that might help you later in the meeting, thinking about if you want to vote yes or no on these social services. If the budget passes as presented, and the Conservation Fund passes, and all social services pass, the tax increase goes from the 5.10 that we spoke about earlier in the presentation to 7.69% tax increase over FY24. So back to my handy chart that shows the total tax increase per property value. So this is if everything passes, the budget as presented, Conservation Fund, and all social services. Per $100,000 of property value would be an increase of $36 to $504 for a total tax bill. $500,000 property value increases by $180 to $2,521. Next, we'll talk about reserve funds, unassigned, and restricted funds. So reserve funds act like savings accounts, and they're typically used for larger capital purchases or projects. For instance, we have a Highway Capital Reserve Fund. We put money in there, and when we are budgeted to purchase a new plow truck, we have money in there to purchase a new plow truck. So those are very well-planned out. They're funded each year in the budget, and they have specific uses in the budget. Unassigned and restricted funds are essentially a surplus. So think of it like this. If we budgeted $100,000 on salt, we only spent $80,000. Well, we've collected the full $100,000. There's $20,000 left over. That would go into what we call restricted funds because those are restricted only for highway use. If we budget, I don't know, $20,000 for attorney's fees, and we only spend $15,000, well, then we have $5,000 left over, and that ends up in what we call unassigned funds. So those are funds that are underspent in any department except for Highway. So it's essentially a surplus that's broken into two parts. Highway money has to stay with Highway, whereas any other department, any surplus there can be used for any other department, including Highway. That's set by statute. So we'll go into a little bit more of a deep dive on each of these to better understand it. So reserve funds function like savings accounts. They can be added to yearly by the voters, and sometimes they're also added by grants from the state. So the Town Center Maintenance Fund is a reserve fund that's funded only by rent payments from tenants in the Town Center. The reappraisal fund is funded by the state's Act 60 reappraisal grant. All other reserve funds are primarily funded by the voters and by the budget. So reserve funds are mostly for large capital projects. The actual use of reserves fluctuates based on the capital plan and emergencies that might fall outside of the scope. So if we have a need to replace an equipment earlier, or there's a large repair that's necessary, sometimes reserve funding will be used by authorization of the Select Board. All reserve funds right now really, well, the majority of them tie back to our capital plan. The capital plan is voted on each year by the Select Board, and it's our plan for purchasing large equipment and infrastructure. So looking a look at reserve fund balances, this is as of the end of last fiscal year, so the end of June 30th, 2023. I know it's a little bit small there, but you'll see that we have the ARPA line on the left. Really does skew this a bit. The ARPA money is the money that the town received as a result of COVID-19. Every town in the country got an amount of money from the federal government proportionate or based on their population. The Town of Richmond got about $1.2 million. So that really skews this line a lot. So what I like to do is take a look at the reserves without ARPA in there, because ARPA also has a sunset on this. It has to be used in the next couple of years. So this is a look at the reserve balances without the ARPA funds, and these are our traditional reserves that we've been funding over the last number of years as a Town of Richmond. So you can see that on the left side, there's a large amount of funds that have the most amount of money, and then there's probably 2/3 of the funds that have a lot less money. The total reserve growth, we have increased steadily up until FY21, and then we've been using the reserve funds a lot more, so you'll see that number start to come down in 2022 and 2023. Part of this has been due to a better focus on the capital plan and a lot better planning on how to use those reserve funds and when to use them and what to use them on. 89% of all reserves are in just eight accounts. As we mentioned, ARPA there at $1.2 million. Then we have Bridge and Culverts at $381,000, the Conservation Fund at $266,000, Town Center Maintenance at $255,000, Record Restoration at $196,000, the Cemetery Fund at $171,000, the Fire Department at $162,000, and Highway Reserve at $118,000. All right. So then we have planned usage of the reserves in FY25. These are not included in the budget as they are going to be coming directly out of reserves. In the Fire Department, we have $3,000 planned to purchase new air tanks and $10,000 planned to purchase new turnout gear. The Highway Capital Reserve, we're planning to use $52,000 to purchase a new Ventrak tractor, and $40,000 out of the Guard Rail Reserve will go to guard rails in Southview Drive. The Library has some planned infrastructure expenditures, $20,000 on the boiler, $15,000 for new flooring, and $15,000 for lighting. You'll also notice as we get into the budget that there's a fairly large contribution to the Fire Capital Reserve and to the Highway Reserve. And again, this ties back to the capital plan, so we're calling for $220,000 to be contributed to the Fire Capital Reserve. Our next big purchases in the Fire Department is a rescue truck, which has a deposit due in fiscal year '26, and the balance due in fiscal year '27. Part of the shift in the capital plan over the last couple of years has been to get away from using loans and try to pay for all equipment in cash by saving reserves upfront. This will save us tens to hundreds of thousands of dollars of interest. The Highway Capital Reserve has a contribution of $218,000 in this year's budget. The next purchases there are the Ventrak tractor planned for fiscal year '25, and then three pieces of equipment that we're planning on for the next fiscal year, a new dump truck, a pickup truck with a plow, and a Kubota tractor. We've also added a new reserve fund this year called the New Transportation Infrastructure Reserve. We're funding it at $25,000. There is a Bridge and Sidewalk Reserve that is primarily for repairing and maintaining current sidewalks, but the town has been continually planning for new infrastructure. There's a plan right now, working its way through Planning Commission, going into the Select Board shortly, to, excuse me, to address the intersection of Bridge Street, Cochrane Road, Huntington, and Thompson Road. So we've done a lot of planning, put money into planning. The next step of that would be, how are we going to pay for that? Usually, there are some grants available for things like new sidewalks and transportation infrastructure, but you need some money as a match for that. So we've started the New Transportation Infrastructure Reserve, which would be for new things separate from, you know, repaving or maintaining a sidewalk, repaving a road. So now we'll talk a bit about unassigned and restricted funds. So this is shifting now from the reserve funds that are planned for and put into the capital budget every year. And this is, again, that surplus that I was talking about earlier where you have more revenue than expected, or you don't spend as much as we expect to in the budget. So it's a combination of underspending, and the surplus reverts to the unassigned funds and restricted funds. Again, restricted funds are just the Highway budget, so it's helpful to sort of separate it out in your mind. The Highway budget, all that money always stays with Highway, and then unassigned funds can be used for, that's every other department, and they can be used for any town expense, including highway expenses. So some ways that this balance increases is we'll get reimbursements from FEMA. So for instance, the flood that we had in July, we probably had $450,000 of hard costs that we spent money on in July for contractors and materials, and there were several thousands of dollars of staff time that really just got absorbed into the budget. We're currently going through the process with FEMA to get reimbursed. It takes a while to get all the data to FEMA, get it all approved, and get it back. So we're So we're expecting to see $450,000, $500,000 or so coming back from the wages that went into the flood recovery, as well as the hard costs that went into flood recovery. But we won't get that back until fiscal year '26 or '25, maybe even '26. And in those years, we wouldn't have budgeted for that money to come in, but we'll get that money, and that'll be excess revenue, and that will drive an overage. So right now, we're going to be a little bit behind in highway, because we had those unexpected expenditures. But in years going forward, we'll get that money back. We just can't budget on that right now, because the process takes so long. Also, underspending on budgeted expenses, where a department has vacancy savings, so if we're short staff in a department, we've budgeted for that staff member, well, we didn't expend that full line, because we didn't have that staff member for the whole year. So we've looked for guidance over the last number of years of how much should we keep on hand. It proved helpful this summer, when we had money on hand to help us get through the flood, help us get through the recovery. If we end up, we don't have enough money on hand, we would have to take a short-term bond or short-term note to have money to meet those expenses. So there's ways to do it, and there's sort of a balance of how do you want to approach that. So as we've talked to our auditors, they've said that about 15% of the annual budget is healthy to have in a combination of restricted and unassigned funds, and that helps us get through any of these types of flooding crisis or any time when cash flow might be needed. So in November of 2023, the select board adopted the fund balance policy, which puts a limit on unassigned and restricted funds to 15% of the budget. Anything over 15% must be put towards emergencies or towards the next budget to reduce the taxes raised. So this is something that the board, for the last at least five years since I've been here, has really been focusing on, but this year, this November, they formalized that with a formal policy to give themselves guidance and be really transparent to the town. So taking a look at the fund balances as of June 30th, 2023, you get the fund balances at the end of the fiscal year, because of middle-of-the-year update, there's still expenses and things to come and go. So you look at it at the end of the year. At the end of the last fiscal year, unassigned funds was at $922,000. Restricted funds, that was for highway use, is at $708,000. That gave us a combined total of $1.6 million, which is 35% of the fiscal year '24 budget, which is about $4.6 million. Obviously, that's too high. As we just talked about, we're trying to keep it at 15% of the budget, and we came out of fiscal year '23 at about 35% of the budget. So we'll look at unassigned and restricted funds. You can see that they've been climbing quite a bit, up until 2022, where peaked at about $1.8 million. And the fiscal year '23, it did drop to $1.6 million, but as we just noted, it is still fairly high. So this is a look at it as a percentage of the budget. It went from, it used to be around 15% in '12, '13, '14. Some of that spike, that early slope there, is due to funding coming back from Irene, which happened in 2011. Expenses went out, the town was reimbursed, you see a spike there, and then it continued to climb a lot through some vacancy savings up until 2022, 2023, when each year we've been at about 35%. So each year, the select board looks at unassigned and restricted funds and tries to put money back. So taking a look at, let me see. Sorry, I have another sheet I didn't have in front of me. So looking back at previous fiscal years, in 2019, there was $90,000 put into the budget from unassigned and restricted funds. In 2020, there was $161,000 used. In 2021, there was $25,000. 2022, $91,000. In the fiscal year 2023, there was $919,000 of unassigned and restricted funds used. And in the current fiscal year, FY '24, there's $500,000 used. So those, that use of funds primarily, excuse me, let me get some water. So that use of funds was a result of every budget season, in the fall, we talked about the board taking a look at how much is on hand, what is the percentage of the budget, how much should we put into this, into this year's fiscal year budget. Some of it was used to offset direct purchases, so some of it could have been used to offset the purchase of a dump truck or a fire truck without raising taxes. And some of it was just put into the revenue side of the budget as a direct reduction in what we're going to ask the taxpayers for, knowing that that's taxpayer money that came in, that we didn't expend out. So let's put that back in there to reduce the tax burden for the next fiscal year. So this year, as I noted, they put together, or we put together, a fund balance policy to keep that at 15%. So we projected, where are we going to be with unassigned and reserve funds at the end of this fiscal year, and let's get that balance down to 15% going into FY '25. So you'll see in the top left, we start out with combined balance of $1.6 million. We have a budgeted use this year of $500,000, so that's going to reduce that amount. We had unbudgeted expenses due to the July flood of $468,000. We also have unbudgeted revenue coming in from FEMA, so this is from the 2019 flooding. You might remember the Halloween storm. We had a mitigation project that took a couple of years to plan and approve and finalize. So we got that $160,000 reimbursement this fiscal year. We're also going to be getting an additional $4,000 for that project. And now that we've finally closed out the entire FEMA disaster from 2019, there's an additional $42,000 that's coming in as a state portion. So that's additional revenue coming in this fiscal year that we had not budgeted. We also project interest received over the amount budgeted of $136,000. Interest rates are fairly high right now. We've also invested in a few $500,000 certificates of deposit, so we're realizing greater interest over what we budgeted for this fiscal year. And we have some projected vacancy savings in the police budget of about $150,000. So taking all of that into consideration, we are projecting that at the end of this fiscal year, we'll have about $1.1 million combined in unassigned and restricted funds. The FY '25 budget expenses as presented are $4.8 million. So that means, per the policy, we would need to keep 15% of that on hand, which is the $722,000. So $433,000 can go back into the budget, and that has been added to the budget in the revenue side to directly offset what we're calling for for raising in taxes. Okay, so there's a slide of where I just went through. $433,000 is being used in FY '25 as a direct offset. That leaves us with the $722,000, which is the 15% of the budget going forward. Actually, before I get there, I do want to note that if we did not use that $433,000, the tax rate increase, remember, we talked about the rate increase from FY '24 to '25 is 5.1%. If we take that $433,000 out, the increase would actually be 16.94%. So using that unassigned restricted funds greatly reduces the percentage of the tax rate increase and what we're asking for for taxes. Now, we're going to shift to take a quick look at town debt. As I mentioned earlier, the capital plan right now really calls for a reduction or elimination of loans. We looked at how much we spent in interest and loans over the last number of years, and it was hundreds of thousands of dollars as you look at all the different pieces of equipment. Having a large balance of unassigned and restricted funds a couple of years ago allowed us to make some investments to purchase items with cash. Developing a capital plan with larger contributions to reserves upfront puts the cost on us now, but it eliminates the use of loans down the road. It greatly reduces the amount that we're actually going to spend on equipment. This slide, I think last year, had three or four more loans on it, but as we've reduced loans, loans have fallen off, and we haven't got new loans. So currently, loans that we have out there is for a 2005 fire truck that runs through 2026, a 2018 fire truck that runs through 2026. So those two loans will be going away within two years. We have a dump truck that was purchased in 2020. The last payment on that will be made this fiscal year, in 2025. We have a Jericho Road project, that's a larger project, so that's got a few more years out to 2032. And there's a stormwater project on Millet Street that, again, has payments out till Now, we're going to take a look at changes, some of the changes in the budget. I'll go through changes that affect multiple departments, and then I'll go through department by department. I'm not going to get everything, so if you have a question about a specific line item, please ask that at the end of the presentation. So in general, we looked at salaries. We did a, we have a pay grid. Everybody goes up one step on the pay grid in July, and that pay grid goes up 3%. We discussed that percentage increase with the select board, and that's what we pegged the budget projections for, for FY '25. Also, health insurance increased by 12.8%. The town pays 90% of the premiums, and the employees pay 10% of those premiums. In administration, we increased the amount of the contracted services for independent auditors, about a $3,000 increase to account for a single audit, which is needed whenever you spend $500,000 in federal funds, which we anticipate that we will do in fiscal year '24. So we have to have an additional portion of the audit, which costs more money in '25. We reduced the contracted grounds maintenance by $15,000 from $50,000 to $35,000. This is for essentially mowing and grounds maintenance of the parks, the town center area, the cemeteries. We've began contracting that out two years ago now. We're trying to get to a better number of what that actually costs. And last year was closer to 35 than it was to 50, so we're reducing that number. We also offset the community well-being line with $5,000 from one of our reserve funds. We have an opioid settlement that came to the town, and the community well-being line is for programs for substance abuse prevention in town, so that's a good use of some of the opioid settlement money. The police department is budgeted for four officers. It would be Richmond officers and a chief contracted with Heinsberg. On the police, this past year, we were able to sell two police cruisers. We now have four cruisers, so we've reduced the fleet of cruisers a bit. We do have one current officer, who is currently on military leave and projected to be on military leave until the middle of September. We are currently trying to hire for those other three positions. Our interim chief, Chief Cambridge, who we share with Heinsberg, has been active in recruiting and conducting interviews, and we hope to have those positions filled shortly. The library department, we actually transitioned away from a reserve fund, where we used to have fees that came in for the public use of the technology room, go into a reserve fund. Now, those are going into general revenue to offset the expenses with that reserve, with that room. Charitable appropriations, as we covered extensively earlier, you'll see, though, in the budget, there's a section for charitable appropriations. We've left all the items in there, as well as in their new homes, in the budget, just to make sure that we're keeping historical numbers accurate. So you'll see underneath that heading in the budget, that the FY '25 is all zero. They've all been moved to other areas. Contracted social services, the Williston Community Justice Center, this is the justice center that we talked about earlier, that is shared with, it's housed in Williston. It's funded largely by a grant from the Department of Corrections, but Williston also has been footing some of that bill. They came to us and to Heinsberg to request some money. So $15,000 is the share of the actual costs based on population between three towns. In the highway department, we increased the center line, Peyton Shoulder Line, by $21,000 from $7,000 to $28,000. That, the original, the original $7,000 essentially paid to put fog lines on the paved portion of West White Hill Road, East Hill and East Hill Road, and also to pay for paint that the highway crew uses in-house. So all the parking stalls, all the, so like the parking lines on Bridge Street, in the town center, the crosswalks, all of that is done every spring by our own road crew. So part of this budget is to go towards that paint. In discussions with the select board, traffic calming and traffic safety has become a very large topic in town over the last number of years. So this increase will allow us to paint fog lines on Heinsberg Road, Cochrane Road, Huntington Road, and East Hill Road, with the idea being that you sort of visually narrow the travel lane for cars, and that's a cue to slow down, and then you provide a spot for pedestrians and pedestrians to use on the side of the road. And that's been proven through some engineering studies as a portion, a piece to help with pedestrian and bike safety. Certainly doesn't solve it all, but it's a step in the right direction. We also created the new reserve line for new transportation infrastructure. Again, this is for not existing sidewalks. This is for like a new sidewalk or new infrastructure, and funded that at $25,000. On the revenue side, the net interest and general checking, we increased by $86,000 from $14,000 to $100,000. As I mentioned, this year, we're going to be over $100,000 in interest, and we're projecting a similar increase for FY '25, so we wanted the budget for that to offset what we need to raise in taxes. And that brings us to Slide 66, which thankfully is the end of the presentation, and I'll pause now for any questions.
Thank you. Yes, up in the, can you turn my microphone back on?
And actually, as you ask the questions, we have the Boy Scouts that are going to be coming through the room with the microphones. So, oh, so please just wait for the microphone and I guess.
Yes, okay, now we're back. Okay, good. All right, yes, please state your name and ask your question.
Hi, my name is Pete Halverson. Josh, on Slide 55, I believe, if the town budget is reduced for whatever reason, is the 433K still committed to reducing the overall tax increase?
So, yes, as presented, is this on? Hello? Okay, sorry. Yes, it would be, but again, if the town budget was reduced hereby in amendment, and then the voters present also wanted to increase the amount, they could do that, but we'd have to make sure they do that within the 15%. Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Jean Anne Haskin. I'd like to make a motion that any changes, monetary changes to the budget be made on a paper vote rather than a show of hands or voice. And so I understand we need seven people.
Yeah, if that's your, is there a second on that? Second out back? Yep. Are there seven people that, the motion is on the floor is, is to ultimately vote the budget on a paper ballot? Are there, there are other people, are there seven other people that are interested in that? One, two, three, four, six. Okay, there's seven. Okay. Thank you.
Did she say the budget or just changes?
So that, excuse me, Josh, thank you for, so it's really about changes, Jean, is, if there's any, if there's any changes in the budget, it will be voted on by a paper ballot. Any other questions on the budget? Yes, in the back, way in the back.
Thank you, Carol LaMoutie. Are the questions specific to Josh's presentation right now?
Or any, no, not specifically. This is, the motion's on the floor, so we're able to entertain questions or amendments or whatever.
Great. Josh, on Slide 55, right where you're at right now, the $150,000 on projected vacancy savings, is that for FY '24 budget?
Correct. That's the projected savings in the police department for FY '24, factoring in vacancy savings, but we also factored in the contracts with Heinsberg for police services and chief services, but that's all FY '24 savings.
Okay. I have a copy of your last quarter of FY '24 financials that have been released. You currently are running at a 50% savings in your police department, which calculates to be $350,000, because you actually have no officers receiving a salary in 2024. The one officer you have is scheduled to come back in September. So your calculated savings currently, based on your Q2 budget to actual, has a, sorry, excuse me, has a savings right now, running at 25% for only half the year. So if you double it, you'll be running at 50% for the year, which is historically what you've done, because FY '23, you had a 50% savings as well. So I am going to make a motion.
Can I explain one thing before?
You sure can, Josh, but the numbers speak.
Well, I understand that. What we did was, the way we got to this was, in the middle of December, which was when we were finalizing the budget with the select we were finalizing the budget with the select board, the police department expenses were at $176,000. 5.5 months of the police department budget was $325,000, so roughly a little less than half. That was a savings year-to-date in the middle of December of $149,000 or $150,000. So as we look at the, the first half expenses, part of what's not factored in there is I think that we haven't been billed yet for the December bill from Heinsburg for police services and chief services. And also, part of that was, I think, in July, we didn't have the chief services, we didn't have general services from Heinsburg either. So projecting out for the next six months, we will, we do anticipate paying the bills from Heinsburg for police services and chief services, which does help make up some of that gap of not paying officers that we don't have here in Richmond. So I just want to put that in there, that there, there, we've looked at that, there are some other numbers. We've looked at that again yesterday, wondering with the same exact question of, oh, okay, yeah, maybe there's some savings to be had here. And as we looked at where we're at right now with what we anticipate paying to Heinsburg, it's still at about $150,000 projected year-end savings in the police department.
So back to the numbers. FY '23, you saved, you, you actually spent 49%, I'm going to make sure my numbers are accurate here. In FY '23, you spent 49% of the police budget, and you banked 51%. In FY '24, as of the, the only financials that have been released to the public, you are at a 50% savings projected for the end of the year. So my motion that I'd like to make-
Is it a motion or an amendment, Cara?
An amendment. My motion by Cara LaBounty is to amend Article III to reduce the $4,819,779, excuse me, $79 fiscal year proposed FY '25 budget by $200,000, making the new proposed budget equal to 400, I mean, $4,619,779. That $200,000 reduction is part of the full 350, if you take that 150 plus 200,000. Oh, somebody can second first before I explain. Anyone want to second my motion to reduce the budget?
No, 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 hang on, hang on. First of all, I need to see that, if you have that, I would like to have that up here. I appreciate you writing it down such that we can have clarity here.
Does she bring you on?
Yeah, I think she's just, she's just finishing some figuring there. So the amendment is to Article III to reduce the proposed 4.819779 fiscal year 2025 budget by $200,000, making the new proposed budget amount equal to $4,619,779. Is there a second to that motion?
Is that your name again?
Yes, sir. Please state your name.
Come on, Anthony.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion on the amendment of reducing it by-
Can I explain further?
$200,000? Standby. As the maker of the motion, you have the right in which to speak first.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I have been tracking the unassigned funds, and those are the surplus funds for the past 10 years, and I've pushed hard with the select board for the past five to stop taxing us and banking dollars that weren't needed. Those are called unassigned funds. That's not the reserves, your savings accounts. This is just a pile of money that's surplus. For five years, I've pushed them, and the past five years, they've started adding those money back into the budget. My background is, I do financials for Fortune 500 companies. I know what I'm talking about. What's going on here is, when you start to calculate in, they haven't calculated the full FY '24 unassigned funds that are supposed to be sitting at 15%. When they come to the end of the year in '24, it's probably going to go back up to 35%, because they haven't calculated, calculated all the surplus of what they're going to get each year, what they got in '24. My comment is, these funds are not going to be spent in 2025, and if they are spent in 2025, they will have unassigned funds left over from this year that they have collected tax dollars for us and then just banked. So that's my motion.
Thank you. Any other questions on this amendment, points? Yes, ma'am.
Jean Anne Haskin. So the question that I have too, in relation to this, is do we really need four police officers, or can we cut the number back to two? Because I took, I printed the police blotter, and from January 1st through like the end of February, there were a total of 44 calls on 32 days, which averages less than two calls per day, other than speeding tickets. So these are incidences, like the officer responded to car accidents, and they investigated suspicious activity. There was nothing on this blotter that was of any serious consequence, and also, 24-hour coverage shouldn't be necessary, because there were only three calls that came in just before 8:00 AM, and there was nothing after 11:00 PM. So I think I agree with what Cara is saying, let's reduce the budget, but also, let's look at what we really need in this town for police force.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on the amendment? Yes, ma'am, right down here in the front.
Josh, can I ask a clarifying question?
Please state your name for the record.
Oh, sorry, Lori Dana. So what yours, what I understood you to say is that the $150,000 of vacancy savings, the difference between the $150,000 and what Cara is referring to as $300,000 represents unpaid bills from Heinsburg Police Department that were not reflected in the numbers that Cara has. Is that correct?
Essentially, yes, because we, we had bills for police services, I think it was dating back to, to June. We added chief services in August. We have yet to be billed for December, so that's not included in the financials. So looking forward for the next six months, from January 1st to the end of this fiscal year, we will be paying Heinsburg for the full vote of chief services, as well as contracted police and general services. So that's where, and Connie and I looked at this, Connie, our finance director, we looked at this again yesterday, as our projection for total savings in the police department is $150,000. That was our projection in December, and it's our projection again, right now, based on anticipated contractual obligations with Heinsburg to provide policing for the rest of this year. So that's what, that's where the 150 is, and we, again, we double-checked that yesterday.
Thank you. Any other questions on the amendment? Yes, go, please.
Jack Liam. I would like to commend the current police, because they have been more visible than any other police department that I have been around in the last 45 years. And we have no police, but they are more visible and available than any other place. And I would like to comment that the police chief that there said has been, oh, I've been insulted by the police budget for about 40 years. We are between physically and socially, and socially, economically, Jericho and Huntington. Neither of which town has ever felt required to spend a giant fund for police. For this reason, I will support any reduction in the police budget, and would support putting any unspent police funds into a restricted fund. We voted to make those funds available to police, and we didn't spend it. So put it in the restricted fund and reduce our budget for police next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on the amendment? Yes, go ahead, Jay. Can we turn this mic on here, please?
Testing. Okay. Jay Fur, Chair of the Select Board. Couple comments. I validate those of you who have said we've been budgeting for police and then not having police for a couple of years. We would like to have police, but we are in an environment where every town would like to have police. We are far from the only town in the county that has salaried positions sitting vacant. We do have candidates, I interviewed one about, well, somewhat over a month ago, and we have other interviews scheduled this coming week, to fill those positions. We have three positions open, we have candidates for those positions. That said, we did discuss last fall in the October, November, December timeframe, did we want to fund, did we want to budget as though the police department would be fully staffed, or since the previous couple of years, we had budgeted that way, and then we had not fully staffed those positions? We said, do we want to, what do we want to budget on? Three full officers and a shared chief? Do we want to budget on? There were various formulae put forward, and the numbers in the budget are the ones that we think are most realistic. I think there is a very good chance that we will have a fully-staffed police department within a few months, honest to God. To come, regarding the comment on having so few calls, I've heard from a lot of people in town that they want to have police, not because of what has happened, but because of what could happen. You don't say, we don't need, we don't need insurance for my house because we haven't filed a claim in five years. You have insurance in case you do. And for that reason, I think having a fully-staffed police department is something that we should have. It's something that people look at when they're thinking about relocating to a community, businesses and so forth. Do we have a fully-staffed police department? Do we have a police department? I would argue that we should keep a police department, that we should staff it with three more officers, and I think that's likely to happen. I want to finish by saying that, again, Josh has explained the $150,000 difference between his numbers and Cara's numbers by simply pointing out that the numbers Cara is referencing were not up to date, that further expenditures have taken place. I would argue against this motion, but then, I'm speaking more at this point in my capacity as a citizen, I think that this, the budgeted amount is what we should approve.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I have, I have no doubt that-
Could you please state your name and-
Anthony Cambridge, police, police chief.
You're right, good point.
Who is also a resident of Richmond.
And a resident of Richmond.
Thank you.
I, I have no doubt that come the new budget year, we will be fully staffed. There's not a doubt in my mind. We, as, as Josh and Jay very well know, if, if we were willing to just hire officers, we could have hired by now. We're trying to find the right people. The most important thing is finding the right people. With that said, we are going to have to outfit those officers, buy vests, there's things that need to be done under, out of the current budget year, to get the police department to where it needs to be before July 1st. So, and we also don't, I, I think everyone agrees, we don't want to, I, I would hope just for chief services, we could, we want to continue to pay Heinsburg, but I don't think we want to continue to pay Heinsburg a, a monthly bill. And in order to not do that, we, we really do need to hire the, the three more officers to get Richmond to where it needs to be.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Yes, please. Up on the bleachers, up on the bleachers.
This is Pete Halverson again. Just seems like we're conflating two different problems here, or two different costs. So Clara's, just to make sure I'm clear, Clara's amendment is to reduce the, the, or increase the amount of savings in, in '24, correct?
Well, the, the amendment is to reduce the total budget by $200,000.
Correct, and that's through the police savings that are not big. It's separate from the '25 budget, which is staffing the police force, correct?
Go ahead, Josh.
So her amendment would be on the fiscal year '25 budget, which would reduce it by $200,000. So that's for fiscal year '25, and she's basing that, I believe, on her projection that we have an additional $200,000 in savings in the police department in fiscal year '24. She's questioning whether the 150 that we've projected is, is accurate. I think what she's saying is that she thinks that number is going to be closer to 350, so she's proposing an additional $200,000 out of the fiscal year '25 budget, based on savings in '24. Does that answer the question?
Partly. So the, the, the expenses that are coming in from Heinsburg, which have not been totally calculated, is there a risk to the town of not being able to pay that if this amendment goes forward?
So not, this amendment would not affect fiscal year '24. We would still continue to meet our expenses in fiscal year '24, based on the budget. What it would do is affect fiscal year '25, and if we did not have realized savings of $350,000 in the police budget, we would have to figure out how to operate with $200,000 less in, in '25.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments first time around? Right here in the center? Go ahead and stand up, they can see you better.
They both want to go.
There you go.
Hello, Bonnie Stoyer. I'm just wondering, my husband raised this, and I'm wondering also, has there been a comprehensive conversation that does look at rightsizing our police department? I appreciate what you said. I think that there is, that the community may have questions about that. I know from staffing my own work, that it does take a certain number of bodies to make it work when you're doing something that's 24/7. But I'm just wondering, and I'm asking Josh and the select board, has there been that conversation, along with the chief, who I commend for doing an excellent job overseeing our town? And I would just like to know that.
Thank you. Would you like to answer that, Jay?
Sure. Jay, first, Select Board. Bonnie's question is a good question to ask. Periodically, you have to say, do we have enough, do we have too few? Right now, we're not doing 24-hour coverage. I've heard a couple people make reference to that. We, we never have done 24-hour coverage. Right now, if we were to fully staff our department with four officers and a chief, whether it's a shared chief or our own chief, and we want to have enough coverage so that there's two officers on duty, we, we cannot do that by reducing our staff. And police prefer, we used to be able to rely very heavily on the Vermont State Police to provide backup. The Vermont State Police has made abundantly clear that unless there is an immediate threat to life and limb, they are not responding. So if we want, if we don't have an agreement with Heinsburg, we absolutely have to have this number of police. We're also limited, unfortunately, by the fact that one of our officers is on military leave, which is great, he's serving his country, but that's one, that's one person we can't put on the road. So right now, if we were to hire the three open that we have, and we put the chief on the road, we are just about able to provide the coverage we want. With one fewer officer, it would be very difficult. One thing that we have been looking at, because right now, Chief Cambridge is spending a lot of his time on administrative work, because it has to be done, there's always paperwork, is hiring in conjunction with Heinsburg and admin. We don't know how many hours, because it depends on what people, kind of jobs people are looking for, but that's to free Chief, Chief Cambridge up to do more patrol. So right now, that's kind of what we're up against. We have the bare minimum right now, even if we do hire more people, we're still stretched to be able to provide the coverage, the hours of the day and the days of the week that people want. Josh wants to add to that.
Thank you. Josh, would you like to add to that question?
I just want to add two things to that response. So for about eight months or so, we actually were in a position where we had one interim chief and one officer. So we only had essentially two- So we only had essentially two officers on duty. The other officer was on military leave at that time. Looking at the workload and the response to, to citizen concerns and to cases that we did get, it was far too much for just two people. So that to me showed we needed more officers to help respond to the needs of the community. Also during that time, there was questions about, well, why aren't there more speed patrols? Why aren't we doing more parking enforcement? Well, the answer was, we didn't have enough staff. They would, they would get into a case, he'd have to deal with that case, follow up with paperwork on that case, and didn't have time to go out and do patrols. That's part of the reason why we started to move with Heinsberg, because even when we had two officers, we realized we needed some more support to support the needs of the community specifically with patrolling. There was a second part I had as a follow-up.
Jeff, you still want to...
Oh, and the other part of the staffing is, the other thing that was challenging with only two people was they were always working opposite shifts. There was never overlap. So it made it a challenge to communicate between the chief and the officer, because they didn't have overlapping days without having a day where there was no coverage. And then working by yourself as a police officer is dangerous. You would like to have another person in town, another officer in town as backup, so that if you get into a situation where you need some backup and some help, you know you've got that there. So to be able to adequately staff two officers per shift, every, again, not 24 hours, but it's about like eight in the morning till 10 at night, to have two officers on staff and account for sick time and vacation time and other time off, I believe four officers and a chief is the right staffing level.
Thank you. And to further clarify an answer to the question, go ahead. Again, we're addressing the question from the floor.
Okay. Yeah, I've got a microphone. I'm Jeff Forward. I'm a current member of the Select Board. I'm retiring today. But I want to point out that we're on the front end of a really interesting experiment. Am I doing that right? That's why is it, okay. We're on the front end of a really interesting experiment. If we are able to figure out how to successfully share services with Heinsberg, we would be the first two towns in the state to do that. The past history is not really a good indication of what the potential might be for the future. But we haven't had a fully-staffed police department since 2018. So our past statistics aren't really relevant to what the potential might be. What I'm excited about is if both Heinsberg and Richmond are fully staffed, then we don't necessarily need to have two officers from either town be on, on call at any given time. They can back up one another. And if you think about how important it is for a police officer to have backup at 10 o'clock on a Saturday night in a domestic violence situation, it's really important to have more than one person there. And more than one person, hopefully, that could be, have some experience. So the only department that I know of in the state that is not, that's fully staffed right now is Heinsberg. Chief Cambridge has had a lot of success in hiring in Heinsberg. He's now our chief as well. He's actively engaged in trying to hire for our department. And if we both, both towns had four officers and one chief, between the two of us, we would have more coverage for less cost in each town. So I would rather not short-circuit this experiment. I fully support the idea of looking at the data over the next year and seeing exactly how much staff is needed in both towns, but I would hate to short-circus this experiment before we actually did it. So I do not support this amendment.
Thank you. Other questions from the floor first time around? Yes, sir.
Michael Parent. As written, is this amendment specific to the line item for police, or is this just budget?
No, it's, it's reducing the overall budget by $200,000.
So it would not be specific to the line item for police?
It was not written that way. That's correct. Other questions first time around? Up here in the front?
June Heston. So I just want to bring us back to the motion, because I feel like we've gotten off tangent. And I do agree with what Jeff said, that we do have to look at data, but it's pretty obvious, if you look at what's happening in Burlington after they decreased their police department, I don't think we want that to be happening in Richmond. So I would like to call the question.
Okay, the question has been, the question's been called. It requires a two-thirds majority wish to do it. All those in favor of calling the question, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. This is calling the question for the amendment. So, the amendment has been called, the question for the amendment has been called, so we'll be voting on the amendment at this point in time.
Can I do a point of clarification?
I'm sorry?
Can I do a point of clarification?
Well, the question's been called, so it's, it's not, it's not up for debate, but what is your point of clarification?
My point of clarification is, the motion was not, the motion was not, sorry about that, people. The motion was not to reduce the police department in FY '25 at all.
Thank you.
Was to keep the same services in FY '25. The point of clarification is, the $200,000, which would be a 4% reduction of that 5.1 tax increase, it'd be, reduce it by 4%, is to say that you have not calculated your unassigned funds from FY '24 properly.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And that's how the motion actually does read. So, so we are, the...
Not about reducing police.
We have, we have called the question, and so I will read the amendment and we will vote on the amendment. No, it does not require a paper ballot, because the paper ballot is on the overall budget.
No, her motion, Jeanne's motion was for changes.
For changes. But we're, this is an amendment. So if it defeats, then we're back to the, we're back to the original. We don't have to do that. We have to vote on the amendment. If the amendment passes, then it's decreased by 200K, and then we vote on the entire budget.
I disagree, Clint. Jeanne's motion was specifically, any amendment to the budget must be done by paper ballot.
No, it, it said...
I'm right? Josh says I'm right?
I thought she meant voting on change.
Yes.
On changes. But, but...
This is a change.
Gene, could you indicate, was your, was your first motion on a, on any amendment or any, or, or any changes in the budget themselves would have to be done by paper ballot?
Any amendment that is going to change the budget needs to be on paper.
Okay. All right. So then we're, we, we, we defer and go to a paper ballot at this point in time? Are our justices of the pieces ready for, yes, Marshall?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, please.
If I may? Thank you. My name is Marshall Paulson. I'm part of the election committee. So the process we'd ask folks to do for the paper ballot for this amendment would be to line up down the corridor here. We're going to be doing the voting for this amendment by paper ballot, by checking in at these tables over here. We're going to be asking folks to vote on this amendment on the two booths back here. When you've done your voting, the ballot is going to say yes and no. It's pretty straightforward. And the ballot goes in a pink box here. While we're doing this vote for the amendment, we will be continuing on our official ballot that is voted over in this section of the gymnasium. Thank you.
Okay. So just to be clear, you'll queue up where Marshall has indicated to you, but I, I would like to, this is what we're voting on, folks, okay? The amendment is to reduce the proposed $4,819,779 fiscal year '25 budget by $200,000, making the new proposed budget amount equal to $4,619,779. Yes?
I've suggested several times now, can I say anything?
No, because the question has been...
I'm asking for a decision.
The, the, the question has been called, so we're going to vote, we're going to vote on that now, so.
Are you going to have to call or not?
I'm sorry, the moderator didn't, didn't recognize that. So please queue up, and you were, we're voting on the amendment.
Yes. A, yes. Can you give me the microphone back?
Yeah. Turn the microphone back on.
Yeah. Okay. I need this back on.
Remember, the amendment, if you're voting, if you're voting yes, that means you're voting to reduce the budget by $200,000. If you're voting no, that means it's going to be defeated and we go back to the original amended amount.
Yeah. No, the Senate. Senate. Senate can authorize a paper ballot. Yeah. Vermont State statute, you know this. I know the Senate is different from the justice. Correct. Yeah. Yes. The motion wished to have a paper ballot, and that can be done by seven citizens. Yeah. Statutes have changed, yeah. Seven, if seven people said they wanted a paper ballot, that's what we're going to do. I'm hoping, I'm hoping people will vote that. So we'll find out how many people are here. So we have a, we have a full, Jay, thanks. 25, right. Correct. And I think what we're going to do, is next round, we're trying to anticipate those eight items, there's going to be, there's going to be a motion to suspend the rule to combine all of those onto a, onto a paper ballot, so we don't have to do it once. Duncan had 107. That is the rule of the court. Yes. Okay. Yes. Yes. Right. What's that? I think we might just want to, every minute or so, keep repeating what yes and no means.
Remember, folks, if you're voting yes, you're voting in which to reduce it by $200,000. If you're voting no, then the budget returns to the original amount.
I thought, I thought Gene had indicated the main motion, because if the amendment reduces it by 200K and it goes down, it goes down, then the original budget isn't, isn't changed and we would vote, we would vote, we would vote on that. I don't know why she chose to make changes paper ballot and the whole thing paper, but she, she would do, she would do. So is there procedurally a way to reconsider the paper ballot or wanted to voted, there is a... No, you can reconsider. It's tricky. If seven people wanted it, and they did. Give me more, Barry. What are you thinking? Well, because I'm just looking at this cluster that we're admiring for 40 minutes. And I'm guessing other people might have said, "Why are we doing paper? Let's just vote." Right. The seven people asked for a paper ballot. Yes. And then, so that's my question, if there's a way to be standing on our front row. Under what, again, give me, give me the reasons why. Oh, yeah. Yeah. I know. They'll get second. Yeah. Wait till the next section. But what we, what was constructed there, what we've constructed there is that we'll suspend the rules and combine all eight articles on the one paper ballot. Or if they want to do it, if they want to do it one at a time, they can do that. Is that the same type of thing? Yeah. The, the chair is in question. Yes. Right. Correct. Correct. Exactly. And we could have done it this way, too. If we'd gone to voice vote, then they could do a division of the House, and I could have had them raise their hands or stand up, but it's, paper ballots, they happen from time to time. People want anonymity. They want you to keep announcing that... Yeah.
Remember, folks, if you're voting yes, that means you're voting in which to reduce the budget by $200,000. If you're voting no, that means you're, we're keeping the budget at the original amount.
One of the things people always fight is the guys drinking and shooting in the field are coming. Yes. And Jeanne Heston, system of office, she's brave. She calls her own best friend. If she'll come break in. If you will take her briefing to a watch for a stand, then there's no...
Hey, Art.
That's a good point. Adjust that to Marshall. Hey. I'm going to talk to you sometime. No, no, Rusty. Every Thursday night. Yeah, he told me that. Good guy, though. Good guy. He, he's, he could, he could, you're never going to have a two-minute conversation. reduce the budget by $200,000. If you're voting no, the budget remains as warned. I mean, we, we had that variable condition from the top to the bottom, and they needed more knowledge for getting that. Yeah, the gnome has been buried all the time. Yeah. I know. But now it's good. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I'm, I'm, every two minutes, I'm doing that. Every two minutes. How you doing? This is, this, this, well, as it was presented, it was with the main motion. But, but that, that's, that's where, that's where seven citizens are going to ask for it. Yes. But she made, she made, she made the designation that any changes on the budget, that means any amendments. Interesting point. Interesting point. Okay, thank you for that. Thank you. So you're going to read something with it? You're not supposed to do that. Go ahead. You're going to read something with it? Technically, we're not supposed to read anything with it. You're not supposed to read from the speech. But I see the speeches you're probably... Yeah, he told me that. Good guy though, good guy. He, he's, he could, he could, you never could have a two-minute conversation.
Another reminder, folks, if you're voting yes, that means you're voting in which to reduce the budget by $200,000. If you're voting no, the budget remains as warned.
I mean, we, we had that variable condition from the top to the bottom and they needed more knowledge for getting that. The gnome has been buried all the time. I know, I know. But now it's good. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I'm, I'm, every two minutes I'm doing that. Every two minutes. How you doing? This is, this, this, well, as it was presented, it was with the main motion. But, but that, that's, that's where, that's where seven citizens didn't ask for it. But she made, she made, she made the designation that any changes on the budget, that means any amendments. Interesting point, interesting point. Okay, thank you for that. Are you gonna read something writ? You're not supposed to do that. Go ahead. You're gonna read something writ. Technically, we're not supposed to read anything writ. You're not supposed to read from the speech. Let me think about that. Okay. Remember, folks, if you're voting yes, you're voting in which to reduce the budget by $200,000. If you're voting no, the budget remains the same as it was warned. Is that what you're after? I'm, I'm doing it every two minutes, yeah.
I'm kinda hoping that Denise will be repeating what you're saying as she hears, and people say, what does note mean? Because we've got all these JP's down there.
So Marshall, did you, did, did, um, did Art talk to you?
Yeah, that's why I came.
No, it's not a bad idea.
And I don't want to do it.
Why?
Um, in part because the more the people see what a, you know, the more that just might.
Oh, well, yes, you have that. You have that. But as we designed it, that's what's gonna happen, Articles 4 through 11.
Right, so, um.
We have done it. I remember Dad doing it by alphabetical, but you can, you can do it anyway.
What do you think? I mean, we could do it by asking people to start first.
It's just, his point was, and people are close together and all that, I understand that, but maybe, maybe we, we file these guys out. You know, it seemed to be there was a lot of, a lot of going back and forth there.
On the other hand, no matter how you do it, it's gonna be a customist. And what do people, you've often, um.
Yeah.
People who just figure it out themselves.
Yeah.
And to over-manage it is a way that could work, could work as well. But how would, I mean, we're thinking about saying, only people in this section first, we don't know, okay, now this section can go, and now this section.
Right. Would it be logistically easier to do? I know your point is, it's supposed to be tangible. Hang on just a second. Remember, folks, if you're voting yes, you're voting to reduce the budget by $200,000. If you're voting no, that means the budgeted item will be as warned.
Assuming we might do this again before Article 4 through 11. Do you want to give it a shot?
Yeah, we can give it a shot.
And, 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 and do you want to go ahead and just call the play?
Well, yeah, let's, 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 yeah, I'll, I'll.
And just say we'd ask people sitting, who we wanted to sit.
Yeah.
And, and then we'll render an opinion.
We'll just see how it works, okay.
And then we'll have a real live sample.
Okay, we'll have a live sample.
And we'll, um.
So, somebody came up to me and says, you know, you should have, you should have re-geen Haskins. Because it should have been each amendment would have to be, you have to.
Or for each amendment and go on each way.
Because what she did is she put Article 3 and any changes, if it, if there was no changes, it would have sailed right through and we had a base. But since there's a change, and it was my fault, since there's a change, now it goes to paper ballot. His point is, you should have ruled that out of order. And, and each amendment, they could have stayed, stood up and said, paper ballot.
Good question.
Yeah. I don't, I don't, I don't.
I don't know the answer to.
Because if there's another amendment that comes up, we're gonna be doing this again.
Um, and we're gonna mitigate anyway.
Right, right.
But you weren't prepared for that. Whatever it is, that, the, um, I still don't know if we can back off on what she.
Oh, I'm having a blast, Carol. I'm having a blast. Democracy is messy. I'm trying to channel Howard. We'll see how that goes.
Remember, folks, if you're voting yes, that means you're voting in which reduce the budget by $200,000. If you're voting no, then the budgeted amount as warned remains.
No.
Remember, if you're voting yes, then you're voting to reduce the budget by $200,000. If you're voting no, then the budgeted, the warned budget remains.
And, um, at some point in this process, I guess, will you look for a high sign from me in the back?
Yeah.
Everybody's voting.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask, yeah, so I'll look for you, yes.
I'll give you a high sign.
Good, I gotta go down and vote too.
And, and so do all the JP's.
Okay.
So after they're all close, then we'll all do our voting.
Okay, very good. Hi, Allison. Good to see you.
Just as a reminder, if you're voting yes, you're voting reduce the budget by $200,000. If you're voting no, the budget remains as warned.
Can't hear what?
Folks, if you could just lower the volume a little bit, our checklist is having a tough time hearing things. Remember, if you're voting yes, you're voting to reduce the budget by $200,000. If you're voting no, the warned budget will remain.
Pete?
I'm having, I'm earning my money.
This is democracy in action. We'll see, we'll see. I don't know. We'll see, we'll see how Articles 4 through 11 goes. Good in yourself. Good for you to get them out voting. Very good. Vote, vote, vote. Ah, okay, okay.
Remember, folks, if you're voting yes, you're voting reduce the budget by $200,000. If you're voting no, the budgeted amount as warned remains.
Democracy in action, Dave.
It's messy.
It's messy. Ooh, man, I guess so. It might be coming under, I don't know. It's cold.
Marshall?
So, so I can call last call now?
Okay, anyone that has not voted on the amendment, we're getting close to finishing up here, so if you haven't voted on the amendment, please go forward. Remember, one last time, if you're voting yes on the amendment, you're, you're voting to reduce the budget by $200,000. If you're voting no on the amendment, that means the warned budget remains the same.
Democracy.
He's giving them out. Somebody's passing them out.
We're still under Article Three.
We're still on pause, right?
Yeah.
And I told Marshall we have to do it by sections next.
Yeah, I think so, too.
When I watched the video of town meeting...
Just put it in the looking box.
John?
She has a reason for it.
What?
She doesn't want to catch anything that she could pass out.
John? There are more of those green papers out from the lobby. And put out more, don't get more and more logs on the counter, more to somewhere. Okay.
The, um, some folks, and other business today, some folks are going to have some sort of very long resolution, but they've worked on it.
Yeah.
And my quest, they also have copies of this that they are interested to hand out if people would like them. Given what just happened, I wanted to run this by you and see if I should just tell them, "Don't hand them out."
Linda?
No, we're not passing them out.
You can't, you can't pass them out.
The thing is, it's not a budget item.
I know, this is under, this is what Connie was after?
No, this is different. This is a...
Why? We don't have names on them.
Yeah, just add them up. I don't have any extra of those papers.
The, um, this is a ceasefire, this is in other business.
Yeah.
A ceasefire resolution. The Town of Richmond stands against him like senitism and blah, blah, blah. It's not a dollar-figure thing and nothing's being voted on.
Right.
It's a resolution. Given what just happened, I'm sensitive to whether you would approve of these folks saying...
We've had that in the past.
That if someone would like a copy, we have copies for you.
Oh, yeah, we don't, yeah, we, we don't want to, we don't want to hand out copies.
No. But these folks will have copies with them.
Yeah.
But not to pass out.
Are they planning on reading this?
I believe so. I don't know. I don't represent them, but I know Gretchen's on the Q.
Okay.
And I think that Patty Gresham wants to have this under other business at the end of the meeting.
They can stand up and they can read it. We cannot pass it out. After the meeting is completely over, if they want to say that on the street, pass it out, they can.
But not to pass out while we're actually in the meeting.
Nope.
Right, right.
I appreciate you finding that. I'll let them know.
And then I need a copy.
Um, I have to give this one back to Gretchen.
Okay.
All right, we're going to go finish counting some more.
Okay. Thank you for your patience, folks. We're almost done counting. If you could keep it down so our counters can count, that would be good.
Do you want to speak to the, I'll introduce it, but passing information out inside polling places is illegal, right?
Yep.
So, so I'll, let me introduce that and you can make a statement on that?
Yeah.
Thank you for keeping it down, folks. We're just waiting a couple more minutes while the results are tabulated. You've all been very patient.
It's so quiet there to put pressure on the counters.
You want to say that right now about the papers?
Yeah, while we're waiting, folks, as long as you're nice and quiet, there has been some handing out of material in, inside the polling place. And I'd just like our town clerk to perhaps give a few words on why that's not a allowed practice.
Thank you. I understand that those green sheets on housing have been passed out in the polling place, and that is illegal due, according to state statute. So if anybody has them in here right now, please put them away. They are not to be referred to because we will be talking about a housing issue later in the agenda. Virginia?
Yes, it's not specific.
No, but we're, I know, but it's still housing. So we can't have them in here. Yep, yep. If, if you want to be outside the polling place, yes, but not handing them out in the gym.
This is a little along the lines of t-shirts and hats that have a, you know, particular bias to things. So that's how the legislature has written things.
At some point, somebody needs to do the jeopardy.
Yeah.
Mr. Moderator?
Do we have the results, Marshall? Okay, the results are, can you hold that, Chris? Okay, I will, I will allow the town clerk in which to give the results.
The results of our paper ballot are yes 75 and no 144. So we do not take the $200,000 off of our budget.
Thank you. That means the amendment has failed. We are back to the original question. And since it's been a while for the original question, I shall, I shall repeat it one more time. Shall the voters of the Town of Richmond approve a budget of $4,819,779 to meet the expenses and liabilities of the Town of Richmond in the fiscal year 2025? So that is what we're back to, the original Article Three. And so what does the body wish to do with Article Three? It's already moved. And any other questions or comments? Connie, did you have anything you wanted to say since I didn't see you before? Thank you.
The, Connie Bona, Finance Director, the information that Josh had up there early was very accurate.
Really close.
Was very accurate as of yesterday, but one thing that our auditors advise us to do is not project. We did project some things on there because we are very conscious of those unassigned funds and reserve funds. But what's not projected on there, which is why...
Close, Connie.
Which, which is why I'm glad this went the way it did, is there's no FEMA events projected on there. And as we saw in July, one storm alone cost us $468,000. And there were towns out there that didn't have that money when that event happened, and they could not start work. So having that money available so the Highway Department can act quickly is a good thing.
Thank you. Jay, did you want to add to that?
Testing. Jim? Okay, there was a point that we've mentioned multiple times at the Select Board meetings relating to the budget and that Josh mentioned, but I just want to reiterate. We have been able to use leftover unassigned funds every year since, I don't know when, to reduce the tax rate. We had $468,000 in unassigned funds that could have been used to reduce the tax rate, but July happened, and it took $468,000 to repair the roads. If we had not had those floods, that money would have been used to reduce the tax rate, and the increase would have been close to flat. At least the last time Josh and I looked at the numbers together. If there hadn't been a flood, there would have been negligible tax increase. However, Josh also mentioned earlier today that at some point, no one knows when, because this is FEMA we're talking about, we are going to get paid that money back. We just have, we don't know when. Josh mentioned the 2019 Halloween flood. In 2019 on Halloween, the culvert on Thompson Road down toward the garage was just wiped out. It was very expensive to replace. In fact, if I recall, we had to replace it once. They came back and said that's not the right size. We had to do it again. We just got paid for that within the last few months. That was 2019. So we don't know when we're going to get that 468 back, but we're supposed to get it sometime. We just can't, we can't budget because it's just this giant honking unknown. But the Select Board has been able to keep the tax rate down each of the last several years. My first year on the Select Board, the taxes actually went down because we had enough unassigned funds left. We'd love to be able to do that every year, but, you know, we'd actually love to have such perfect projection that we just don't have unassigned funds because we always know exactly what we're going to spend. Unfortunately, we don't have that 2020 future vision. We do our best to not budget for anything unrealistic, and then things happen. So I appreciate everybody for your interest in this, and I don't blame you. No one wants their taxes to go up, but because of the flood, what we normally would be able to do, we're not going to be able to do.
Thank you. Any other questions first time around? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Kristy Witters. I have a question on the police budget. There's a new line item, contract services chief of police. And this is $78,000 that's added to the police budget. Is this going to be something that's ongoing and that increases our police budget? I'm totally supportive of contracting with Heinsberg and think it's a great opportunity for cost savings, and I just see it going up.
So that line is in there to pay for a contracted chief services from Heinsberg, but we reduced, sorry, we reduced the salary line by the same amount to save for, like, sorry, we took the chief out of the salary line and then added the contracted chief services because they would no longer be a paid employee, but we're paying Heinsberg for that service. So it was a wash. It was taken, taken out of the salaries and added to contracted services.
Thank you. Other questions? Yes, way in the back?
Chris, right here. Chris, raise your hand again.
No, I, I, I'm sorry. I recognize Carol LaBouny.
Oh, okay.
I didn't recognize you. I recognized Carol first. I'll get to you.
I, I respect the wishes of the room, so I'd like to call the question because I believe we're going to vote on 4.8 million and pass it. So I call the question.
Okay, the question's been called. That means we cease debate. If there's a two-thirds majority that go with the calling of the question. So the question's been called. I need to understand. All those in favor of calling the question, so signify by saying aye. Those opposed, no? The ayes seem to have it. The ayes have it. The question has been called. So we move right to Article Three now. We're voting on the article here on the floor. Article Three, shall the voters of the Town of Richmond approve a budget of $4,819,779 to meet the expenses and liabilities of the Town of Richmond in the fiscal year 2025? All those in favor of Article Three, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no? The ayes appear to have it. Is there a question? The ayes have it, so passed. Article Three is passed. Article Four. Now, before we get into the social services piece of it, again, based on our experience here these last few minutes, there's a few ways that we, that, that we can handle this. We can go article by article, or we have the ability in which to suspend rules and, and combine things, paper ballot or elsewise. So I just want to allow people that, understanding that since these social services, these next eight articles have been broken out, we do have the ability in which to do things different. So I, I thrust that out at the body, and I recognize Marshall in the back, please.
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, point of order, please. I'd like to make a motion, and I move that after any discussion of Articles Four through 11, that we vote on Articles Four through 11 by one paper ballot.
So you're, you're, you're looking in which to suspend the rules and, and, and combine those onto one paper ballot? Is there a second to that? There's a second in the back? There's a second in the back, okay? So we can have a discussion on this particular motion. Yes, ma'am, right there.
Meg Freeburn. Marshall, would you accept a friendly amendment to your amendment to change that to combining them with a voice vote?
Marshall's up here.
Thank you. No, my motion was to do it entirely by paper ballot.
Okay. So is there, are there, so we can have, we can have the discussion on this motion as far as combining all of those into one paper ballot. Thank you for that option. Any other questions on the motion on the floor? Yes, up in the rafters, the bleachers. Up in the bleachers.
Jake Levison. Does this mean we're combining all the vote, all the money into one vote?
No.
No, it would be, I move that after the discussion of Article Four through eleven, we vote on the Articles Four through eleven by paper ballot. So it would be, there would be a line item, Jake, on each, on each article on the paper ballot.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yep.
Thank you.
Way up there. Go ahead.
That was my question.
Okay.
So we get to vote on each individual one, but on one paper?
That's correct. That is, that is the intention of the motion is to vote, there'd be eight lines on the piece of paper and you get to vote on it. Now, what this also does is it does allow each article will be moved and there can be discussion, there can be an amendment on it as well, up or down or whatever. So you could do that if we're, if we're okay with that method of voting. Are there any other questions on the, on the motion on the floor? Yes, ma'am, right up front.
We will provide them with a ballot.
And we'd provide you with a ballot with the proper amounts.
Marshall, June Heston. Marshall, would you be willing to explain why you think this, there's an advantage to doing it this way?
Thank you. I don't know that there is a particular advantage, but I want to be sensitive to any of us as voters in town that may feel any sort of hesitation on voting either in favor or opposed of any of these amendments while they're sitting amongst their community members. And that's the main reason why we're thinking of a paper ballot. And I think it was clarified, and I apologize in my original request, that each of the Four through eleven amendments have a separate yes or no section, or will have that on the paper ballot.
Correct.
Thank you.
You'll be provided with those paper ballots. Any other questions on the, on the motion that's on the floor? Yes, all the way in the back.
Don Yaggy. I was looking at the articles under consideration here and the amount comes up to about twenty thousand dollars, which is not busting the bank. And I think after watching what went on with the paper ballot and the amount of time it took, by the time we get to the Brown's Court issue, which I think a lot of people are interested in, there's going to be probably a third of the people here will remain. It would, I'd like to go back to a voice vote.
Thank you. Way in the back.
I support going both, voting by voice and not paper ballot. If we just passed and didn't want to reduce by two hundred thousand dollars, sixteen thousand, twenty thousand, that's nothing and we're all probably going to vote in favor of it. So I'm okay with seeing how my neighbors vote and how I vote. This is, this is social services. This is nonprofit. This is charity money and it's nothing for us.
Thank you. Any other questions on the motion that's on the floor? So you're ready for the question? Now, we're just voting on, on how to deal with these next articles. The motion is that, move that after any discussions on Article Four through eleven, we vote on the Articles Four through eleven by paper ballot. All those in favor of said motion, so signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The motion has been defeated. Article Four. Shall the Voters of the Town of Richmond Vote to Appropriate Five Hundred Dollars to the Vermont Family Network to Provide Support to Richmond Families with Children of Special Needs, Such Amount Being Reasonably Necessary for Support thereof? Do I have a motion to move that to the floor? So moved. Seconded? Seconded? You got somebody there? Okay, any discussion on Article Four? Yes, all the way in the back.
Thanks. Rick Barrett. I just am asking for a clarification on each of these articles. Is this money that we're going to draw from the budget already approved or is this money that's going to be added separate and apart?
Thank you. Would you like to answer that?
This is, am I on, okay. This would be in addition. These amounts would not be part of the budget already approved.
Thank you. Any other questions on Article Four?
If I could make one other comment. I'm not going to go into the deep detail about why legally we're doing it this way. That's been discussed in Front Porch Forum and elsewhere. But one option that you have, if you look at any of these line items and say, "Why are we giving so little?", you have the option to increase it. If you think we're giving too much, you have the option to decrease it. That's one of the advantages of each of these coming up separately. So if you're looking at these amounts and you don't know why they're, part of the reason these amounts are there is because this is what the group's asked for.
Right.
Okay, so these are the requests. If you think the requests are normal, you can just approve them. If you think should be more or less, an amendment can be made.
Thank you. Are you ready for the question? Article Four. Jeff. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. So the reason why we're doing this is that we're, what these charitable contributions are, we're raising that money through property tax to give to charitable organizations. The reason why these particular organizations are listed is because they are the ones that apply. There are many other charitable organizations who didn't apply. The one last thing that I'll say is that, to my mind, there's one organization that's different, that stands out differently than the other four, five, six-
Seven.
Seven, than the other seven. And that's our Community Cares Camp. That- We're not, we're not quite to that, Jeff. Right. Okay. But- We're handling these one at a time. You know, my comment applies to all of them is that, you know, the question before us is whether or not to raise money through property tax for charitable contributions. That's why this is here. Thank you. Are you ready for the question? Article Four. Shall the Voters of Richmond Vote to Appropriate Five Hundred Dollars to the Vermont Family Network to Provide Support to Richmond Families with Children with Special Needs, Such Amount Being Reasonably Necessary for the Support thereof? All those in favor, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no?
No.
The article has passed. Article Five. Shall the Voters of Richmond Vote to Appropriate Thirty Five Hundred Dollars to Age Well to Provide Support and Guidance to Town Residents Age Sixty Years and Older, Such Amount Being Reasonably Necessary to Support thereof? May I have a motion to move Article Six? So moved. Is there a second? Second?
No.
Excuse me, I meant Article Five. Thank you very much.
John.
Any discussion on Article Five?
John. John Malazo. Sorry. Thought it was an angel calling.
Do you, do you have a question?
No.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. No questions on Article Five. Are you ready for the question? Article Five. Shall the Voters of Richmond Vote to Appropriate Thirty Five Hundred Dollars to Age Well to Provide Support and Guidance to Town Residents Age Sixty Years and Older, Such Amount Being Reasonably Necessary for the Support thereof? All those in favor, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no?
No.
The article has passed. Article Six. Shall the Voters of Richmond Vote to Appropriate Three Hundred and Seventy-Five Dollars to the Vermont Center for Independent Living to Provide Services to Enhance the Lives of Town Residents with Disabilities, Such Amount Being Reasonably Necessary for the Support thereof? May I have a motion to move this to the floor? Thank you. Is there a second? A second? Is there any discussion on Article Six? Yes, ma'am.
Jean Anne Haskin. I just have a question. What are the services that get provided? Just curious.
Josh?
There's a packet in front of you.
Hi, I'm Martha Marciel and I, I'm a social worker with home health, actually, but I refer to VCIL for people under the age of sixty when they need meals on wheels, when they can't prepare their own foods because Age Well provides it for over sixties. VCIL has funding for home modifications for people with disabilities like ramps and assistive devices and they provide peer support and a myriad of other programs too.
Thank you. Any other questions on Article Six? Are you ready for the question? Article Six. Shall the Voters of Richmond Appropriate Three Hundred and Seventy-Five Dollars to the Vermont Center of Independent Living for Providing Services to Enhance the Lives of Town Residents with Disabilities, Such Amount Being, Such Amount Being Reasonably Necessary for the Support thereof? All those in favor, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no?
No.
The article has passed. Article Seven. Shall the Voters of Richmond Vote to Appropriate One Thousand Dollars to the Committee on Temporary Shelter to Provide Emergency Shelter, Services, and Housing for the Town Residents Who are Homeless or Marginally Housed, Such Amount Being Reasonably Necessary for the Support thereof? May I have a motion to move this to the floor? Motion? Is there a second? Seconded? Is there any discussion on Article Seven? Are you ready for the question? Article Seven. Shall the Voters of Richmond Vote to Appropriate One Thousand Dollars to the Committee on Temporary Shelter to Provide Emergency Shelter, Services, and Housing for Town Residents Who are Homeless or Marginally Housed, Such Amount Being Reasonably Necessary to Support thereof? All those in favor, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no? The article has passed. Article Eight. Shall the Voters of Richmond Vote to Appropriate Three Thousand Dollars to our Community Cares Camp to Provide Enrichment and Food Services to the Children, Internship Opportunities for Youth, Job Training, and Development for Young Adults for Town Residents, Such Amount Being Reasonably Necessary for the Support thereof? May I have a motion to put that on the floor? The motion, is there a second? It is seconded? Is there any discussion on Article Eight? Yes, ma'am, in the back.
Denise Barnard. I know that our Community Cares Camp also helps students in Bolton and Huntington and Jericho, I believe. I'm just curious, over the average, how many of our Richmond children attend this camp in the summer?
Do we have some expertise here? Could you raise your hands for the scouts? Oh, there she is, okay.
We roughly have-
Could you, could you please state your name for the record and, yes?
Suzanne Parent, Executive Director for our Community Cares Camp. We roughly have about thirty-three students, give or take. So it's about, we have in Richmond and Huntington and Bolton, between the three, there's about a third of the three towns. Richmond usually has the bulk of the campers.
Thank you. Any other discussion on Article Eight?
Clint?
Yes, sir.
James Malaski. Along that line, I was curious if it's equal distribution for students, what are some of the neighboring towns, what do they typically pass in their town budget to support this
I ask the same amount from all the same towns except for Bolton. Bolton, in my, this is just purely my opinion, they're the most economically stressed in our, of our five communities. This year, I have asked double of that community of the past years. So they, my request is double of them and of the other four towns, I asked the exact same and they have paid the exact same over the past four to five years as Richmond.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, ma'am, over here.
Hi, Alyssa Decoco. I just kind of want to point out that we didn't ask those same questions of other organizations that asking what, how many people are served in each town as we did, putting the discrepancy on the one that clearly was built and defined to serve kids in our community. So I just wanted to point that out as we think about this item. And that in the grand scheme of a budget of a nonprofit that is super local, hyper local, three thousand dollars is not a lot of money.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead. You know, I want to thank you for that comment. You know, I think there is a distinction with our Community Cares Camp and the other requests. Our Community Cares Camp, as you state, is super local. It was, it was formed in Richmond. It does an incredibly valuable service of not just providing fun for kids during the summertime, but food for kids who don't get free and reduced lunch during the, during the summer. So it's both nutrition and what I think is a really valuable social service specifically for our community. Thank you. Any other discussion on Article Eight? Seeing none, are you ready for the question? Article Eight. Shall the Voters of Richmond Vote to Appropriate Three Thousand Dollars to our Community Cares Camp to Provide Enrichment and Food Services to the Children, Internship Opportunities for Youth, Job Training, and Development for Young Adults for Town Residents, Such Amount Being Reasonably Necessary for Support thereof? All those in favor of Article Eight, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no? Article Eight has passed. Article Nine. Shall the Voters of Richmond Vote to Appropriate One Thousand Five Hundred Dollars to Steps to End Domestic Violence for Assisting Town Residents Who Have Been Affected Physically, Sexually, Emotionally, or Economically by Domestic Abuse in the Transition to a Safe, Independent Life, Such Amount Being Reasonably Necessary for the Support thereof? May I have a motion to move this to the floor? I need to see, there you go, okay. Can I get a second? Seconded? Is there any discussion on Article Nine? Seeing none, are you ready for the question? Article Nine. Shall the Voters of Richmond Vote to Appropriate One Thousand Five Hundred Dollars to Steps to End Domestic Violence for Assisting Town Residents Who Have Been Affected Physically, Sexually, Emotionally, or Economically by Domestic Abuse in the Transition to a Safe, Independent Life, Such Amount Being Reasonably Necessary for the Support thereof? All those in favor, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no?
No.
The article has passed. Article Ten. Shall the Voters of Richmond Vote to Appropriate Five Thousand Dollars to Turning Point Center of Community, of Chittenden County to Provide Town Residents an Inclusive, Compassionate Community Supporting Those on Multiple Paths to Recovery Through Peer-Driven Services in a Safe, Substance-Free Environment, Such Amount Being Reasonably Necessary for the Support thereof? May I have a motion to bring this to the floor? It's moved. Is there a second? Seconded? Any discussion on Article Ten? Seeing none, are you ready for the question? Article Ten. Shall the Voters of Richmond Vote to Appropriate Five Thousand Dollars to Turning Point Center of Chittenden County to Provide the Town Residents with an Inclusive, Compassionate Community Supporting Those on Multiple Paths to Recovery Through Peer-Driven Services in a Safe, Substance-Free Environment, Such Amount Being Reasonably Necessary for the Support thereof? All those in favor, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no? The article has passed. Article Eleven. Shall the Voters of Richmond Vote to Appropriate One Thousand- Article Eleven, shall the voters of Richmond vote to appropriate $1,885 to Hope Works for their work to end all forms of sexual violence to town residents, such amount being reasonably necessary to support thereof? May I have a motion to bring Article Eleven to the floor? There's a motion. Is there a second? Seconded? Is there discussion on Article Eleven? There's a question here or a comment right here? Thank you.
Deb Sharp, and my question is, it sounds like those two organizations address similar issues, and I'm wondering if that's a duplication in what each of them does that's not overlapping.
Thank you.
Steps to--
Hope Works.
Hope Works and Steps are a little different. Hope Works is for victims of sexual violence, people who have been raped or assaulted, not necessarily people who are looking for an emergency shelter. Steps is more focused on battered people, people who need a shelter. They are complementary in that they often do serve some of the same populations, but Steps is focused on safe and secure places for battered people to go, and Hope Works is more specifically for direct victims of sexual violence.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion on Article Eleven? Yes, ma'am, in the back.
My name is Patty Brushit, and I think all of these are really worthy causes, especially our Community Cares, who is located in Richmond and serves Richmond, and I think a lot of these other organizations are great. I think that the people of Richmond should decide on their own which charities. I know that the way you get on this list is all you have to do is fill out an application to the Select Board. We could come back next year and there could be 200. I mean, there are so many organizations. I would love the Select Board to think next year about the possibility of having those applications for Richmond-based charities. And the other charities that are very worthy, we could list them and people could decide as individuals whether or not to give to them, because I just don't know where, you know, where it ends and is it really the appropriate use of taxpayer money? As I say, our Community Cares makes total sense to me because it's a local charity. I noticed many of our charities aren't on here, like the Food Shelf, Richmond Food Shelf. They just didn't apply. So, you know, it's kind of an odd thing that we do.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
Patty, you make a valid point. These organizations do need money beyond what's being asked for here, and I personally, I think I donate to just about all of these, but that's because I can afford to and because I choose to. And I agree that, to a certain extent, if the townspeople wanted to support them with their own money, I mean, they should be encouraged to do so. But as far as the idea of having 20, 40 organizations before us next year, as Josh went over in his budget presentation, there was some pre-screening. You know, we, the reason that these items are being voted individually is because of a court case that required any disbursement to a charitable organization to have a benefit to citizens of Richmond. For example, we cannot ask the taxpayers to donate $500 to Oxfam to relieve hunger in Africa, worthy as a cause as that might be. So all the organizations on here were assessed, and we did feel that they were benefiting Richmond residents in one form or another. But this, these dollars are not funding the entire organization. The $500 that one asks for is just what they're asking for from the town, and we do have, as you know, the right to say no, but I don't think we're going to be looking at 20 or 40. If the Food Shelf wanted to ask, I mean, they could. They just historically haven't done so.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, ma'am, in the back.
Becky Vino, as a board member of the Food Shelf, I just want you to know that we have never received any money from the town, nor do we ask for it. Our community is kind to us.
Thank you. All the way in the back.
I respect the comment, but I want to make sure that the previous person spoke of, about making sure it's Richmond-based. All of these services are available to Richmond residents. Anybody who's had any one of these situations occur, whether it's domestic violence or all of that, it's a service, it's a charitable service that's offered to our community. So by technically voting all of these and passing them all, we are still supporting Richmond residents because they can access those services. So it's very important to support charities that serve us our full community.
Thank you. Any other discussion on Article Eleven? Yes, sir, over here. Right over there.
Sean Witters, Richmond. Just to reaffirm, we're talking about Hope Works and supporting what they do. I'll just note for the audience that Hope Works has also partnered with the University of Vermont, and they provide first-level response to anyone who's suffered from sexual assault and related matters, and their work is very important, and I would very much support having it available to our community, knowing what they do as a faculty contact with some of the things that happen there. And I know it's important to our community, too, so I support funding this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on Article Eleven? Yeah, right across the hall there. There you go.
Virginia Clark, and I'm just wondering if the Select Board works off any kind of, like a general amount that is to go to charitable donations, like a total amount? I mean, that might be something that could be discussed and decided by the voters, like we want to give a total of $30,000 or whatever. And then the Select Board would have the responsibility of dividing it up according to, you know, whatever parameters you have. But, I mean, that's how people at home often decide about their charities, is they have an amount that is for the total. So just for something to consider for the future.
Thank you. Response?
Yeah, that has not been done. We've, prior to this, we've mostly just worked off the requests. And this is the first year that we've actually, as Josh elaborated, done some of the culling to say, is this actually something that benefits potentially all Richmond residents? We've not done the target of 30,000 and then carved it up like a pie, but that is something we could look into doing. We have budgetary meetings to plan the budget in October, November, and December, where citizen input is very much appreciated. In fact, it's appreciated 12 months a year, not just those three months. If people were interested in putting forward that proposal, that we have a target maximum and that we then divvy it up in a particular way, that's a discussion that would be worth having.
Thank you. Any other questions on Article Eleven? Yes, sir, down here, and then I'll come up.
Michael Parent, I'd like to call the vote.
Call the question? Okay, we're calling the question again. Is there, I need to ascertain whether or not there's two-thirds of the majority wanting to call the question. All those in favor of calling the question so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no? Okay, the question has been called. We're moving right to Article Eleven. Article Eleven, shall the voters of Richmond vote to appropriate $1,885 to Hope Works for their work to end all forms of sexual violence to town residents, such amount being reasonably necessary and for the support thereof? All those in favor so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no? The article has passed.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Marshall.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'd like to ask to suspend the rules and move Article 14 before we talk about Articles 12 and 13.
Okay, in order to suspend the rules, we must have a two-thirds majority of vote, asking the body what they want to do. Is there--
Could you reiterate what Article 14?
Yep. So before I ask for a second, for clarification purposes, Article 14 is the Advisory Article, and that's about the investigating developing on town-owned property on Brown's Court. And the motion is to suspend the rules such that we can move Article 14 prior to Article 12, it being noon. So that is, that is the motion's on the floor. Is there a second to that? There is a second? So I need to ascertain two-thirds majority to suspend these rules. All those in favor of suspending the rules to move Article 14 into the queue next so signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no? I believe I have, I believe there is two-thirds majority that says they would like to suspend the rules to move Article-- Is there, is there a question of the chair? Seeing none, the, we have suspended the rules and we will now deal with Article 14. Yeah, hang on a second. So let me get it on the floor first. Article 14, Advisory Article 14, shall the town of Richmond investigate developing housing on the town-owned property of Brown's Court? Can I get someone to move that article to the floor? It has been moved to the floor. Is there a second to that? There is a second, okay? Very good. So we will have a discussion on Article Four, and I will, if there's no, Article 14, if there is no objections, I will let Select Board Member Farr have his first comment.
Okay, so I'd like to be very brief because this article is not about hearing what we think. It's emphatically about hearing what you think. The reason that this is on the agenda is because the town has one piece of property that the town owns that's above the floodplain, that has electricity, water and sewer, and has access to sidewalks. We only have one of them, and that's Brown's Court. Brown's Court has historically been used for a softball field and for just general green space. And nonetheless, we have pressure from many directions to try to do something about housing. The reason Brown's Court is even in the discussion about housing is because there's literally no place else for the town to take direct action. Now, that's not stopping individual builders and property owners from adding auxiliary dwelling units, making duplexes, et cetera. This is just the one place the town can take direct action. But on the other hand, if we put housing up there, we're impacting its use for recreation. And we're sort of in the position of a kid who got $100 from grandma and wants to use $100 to buy a new catcher's mitt, but also wants to use it to buy some video games. You can't do both with the same money. And so we have one piece of land. Do we want, is it worth discussing putting some housing units up there, or would people prefer to use it for recreation?
Only.
Only, right. And I'm not going to state my opinion because that's not what we're here for, but that's why the question's even present. We don't want to go down an alley that the town does not want us going down.
Thank you. Since the motion is on the floor, we'll entertain discussion or questions. Any questions or discussion on Advisory Article 14? Yes, sir. Can we get a microphone right up front, please?
Alan Oliver, I'm resident of Richmond, and I live on Brown's Court. Over the last several months, this issue has been a heated topic of discussion before the Select Board. It was referred to the Housing Committee for consideration. Richmond Housing Committee looked into the issue of using the athletic field for housing, and they found it did not suit their needs. This issue has been looked into and found wanting. Make no mistake about it, there is a big need for low and moderate housing, income housing in the town of Richmond. Brown's Court is not the place. I suggest that the Advisory Article 14 be voted no.
Thank you. Any other discussion on Advisory Article 14? Right in the middle there, in the back. Yep, that's you.
Hi, Bonnie Stoyer. Jay mentioned this is a either-or decision, and my question is, is that valid? Is it possible, which I think when this was originally being thrown out there for public consideration, there was a thought that it could be both, that with some limited amount of affordable housing, not a large complex, but a limited amount, something that met the needs that we see, because I don't think that affordable housing can be, you know, just accessory dwelling units. There's a huge crisis, which I think we're all well aware of. Could it be that there is some housing and also room for recreation? Probably not the recreation that the excellent recreational committee has been pulling together, a lot of wonderful options, which feels delightful and also perhaps doesn't need to be quite so extensive. So I just want to, I just want to know, is this absolutely either or? Have we really done the research to make that decision?
Thank you. Would you like to respond to that?
Sure, but that's an excellent question. There are a number of options up there. The softball field, what I've heard from most people is that keeping the softball field there is non-negotiable, but that's up to the town. We did ask our Director of Planning and Zoning, Keith Oborn, who's sitting here in the front row, to do some rough calculations on what we could potentially put in there without impacting the softball field. And Keith, I apologize if I misquote you, Keith's numbers came out to, we could possibly put in 20 to 24 small studio apartments. We'd be looking at about 500 square feet each, which would be a very small studio. Those would not really be suitable for families, they would be more suitable for individuals. The reason we would say 20 or 24 and not a smaller number of larger units is because we had been hoping to partner with one of the nonprofit housing organizations. That's not set in stone, it's just an option, and they tend to not get involved for fewer than 20 units. But we could hypothetically keep the softball field there, put one building of about 20 units in. The remaining problem with that, though, is parking. There's finite amount of room for parking. If we built the required parking for that hypothetical apartment building, that parking would also get used by people coming for softball games. And there could be times that people would come home from work and find that they couldn't park because their parking space was used by spectators. So it's not, in my opinion, it's not a great fit, but if we keep the softball field there, that's more or less what we would be looking at, would be one building of about, you know, 20, 24 small units.
Thank you. Other questions? Yes, sir, up here in front, and I'll get back there. Do we have a microphone here, guys? There should be two microphones.
Michael Parent, again. I've heard a lot of what everybody has said, both ways, going back and forth on this, and realize that this is a vote to see whether we move forward looking into it. I personally don't think that the townspeople would eventually agree to this, and I do not think we need to spend tens of thousands of dollars by getting architectural firms involved, because before you can put up a building, you've got to have somebody design it, you're going to have to have all sorts of surveys of the land, that's going to cost more money. I don't think it would ever eventually go through simply because of the size of the field, it's not that big, the size that you're only going to be able to put in, as you say, 500-square-foot apartments are for one person. That's a pretty small apartment. That's my bedroom and my bathroom at my house. So that's tiny. I don't see it as feasible to use Brown's Court. I also don't think the town needs to get into being landlords, even if you have somebody else running it.
Thank you. We had a comment in the back, over here.
Melissa Wooliver, I'd like to draw some attention from my personal observations of who is currently using Brown's Court for recreational purposes. In addition to girls' softball and senior citizen softball, there are numerous walkers, there are skiers, there are runners, there are children from Richmond Elementary School, both from classes that come down and also the PE classes. And if you happen to go up during the wintertime and look at the snowy field, you'll see it's completely covered with tracks from people recreating there in the wintertime. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there another question right here? Go ahead. Right here.
Jeanne Haskin, I just--
I just want somebody to clarify for me. I've read all the different comments that have been in the front porch forum, and it's my understanding, and maybe I'm wrong, but it was my understanding that this land was given to the town to be used for recreation. If that's correct, why is the town just trying to change it? So, I, you know, I don't understand.
Okay, we have some expertise here.
I did an extensive amount of research on this subject, and it was given in like 1900 through various people to the Richmond Baseball Association, and there were two gentlemen that were trustees of the association. And it goes for many, many years that they used it. There is a letter somewhere that quite a few of us recall seeing, and it said that it was to be only used for recreation. Unfortunately, we have not been able to find that letter. We know that it was available when Palita Irish was town clerk, and unfortunately, due to her illness, she can't tell us where it is. But there are several of us that did see that, and you would have to, even if you thought today that you wanted to put housing there, that land would have to be approved to be sold to another company, and they would most likely not put anything recreational there. And I agree that there's a housing shortage, but those studio apartments are not going to be what we want them for, being for the policemen, for the teachers. It's not going to work. We already have several affordable housing living areas, including the Trailer Park, Borden Street, and Richmond Terrace. And we have certainly used that area for recreation. It's been for many, many years, and I would hope that the town would be happy enough to keep it as recreation. I cannot imagine, if you come down Jericho Road in the morning when school is in session, the traffic that's there, and if you put a bunch of apartments in there, I don't know how anybody's going to get to the school. And it's a quiet neighborhood, and I, my vote would be to leave it for recreation and not housing.
Please, in the back.
Showtime, Mary Whoel. When my, yeah, that's right. When my father was a barber here in town, he used to cut Jack Berry's hair. Jack Berry was a town representative. Jack Berry owned the Farr Farm before the Fars owned it. So, Jack Berry lived up there, parallel to the ball field. He was also one of the original owners. And when my father was cutting Jack Berry's hair, who again was a legislator, so he had limited hours, dad would cut his hair, and us kids would be ushered off to the ball field. And Jack assured us, I know it's all hearsay, but he assured us that that would always remain recreation. And to do anything other than that, I think, is just unfair to the residents, it's unfair to the folks who use it currently. And Linda's right, if this was turned over for some sort of housing, it's not going to be for the teachers or the police officers or affordable housing for families. It's going to be limited, it's going to be tiny square footage, and I just don't think it's the best use of the resource that is so limited in town. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And over here in the front, there's a couple of them. They're coming. Actually, the, well, it's okay. We'll go the other way. It was close enough. Hello?
Just want everybody to know that-
Could you please state your name for the record?
My name is Gregory Tucker. We need to sell that land in order for it to be developed, so the town is not going to become a landlord for these small box apartments. They need to sell it to a developer. And right now, there's two big players. Cathedral Square and Burlington-
Champlain Housing Trust.
Champlain Housing Trust. And I spoke to a woman at Champlain Housing Trust, and she said, 20 units, 500 square feet, everyone gets a parking spot. Now, you look at that little chunk of land, it's two acres. Now, you're, the ball field has sort of, it's become sacred, so no one's messing with the softball field. So, then what do you have after that? An acre? An acre for 20 units plus parking, plus guest parking, plus parking for use of the ball field? I mean, nip this in the bud. This is, this is a crazy idea. Yes, there's water and sewer there. Three elements of the criteria are correct, but, you know, the kicker is the others aren't. It's just not appropriate.
Thank you. Right behind you. There we go.
Hi, Kristy Witters. I think when we need, when we're thinking about the future of recreation in Richmond, we really need to think about the viability of Volunteers Green. I know about six years ago, John Cartt came before the Select Board and asked to plant trees along the river to preserve the river corridor, and those trees are now being impacted by flooding events. And it's devastating to go down to the park after a flooding event and see the damage done to the ball fields, the playground, and, you know, it's a flood zone. So, if we want to think about organized sports and having a place for them in the future, I think that Brown's Court is the place for that.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Way over here on the bleachers. Up front.
Up here.
Yeah, could you stand up so he could see you there? No, I'm actually identifying you, then I'll get over here. Give the phone-
We have a laser pointer.
There you go. Yeah, laser pointer. There we go.
Deb Sharp. My understanding is there was a committee that was assigned to research all the aspects of this, the pros and cons, and present it to the taxpayers, and I'm curious if we could hear from one of those committee members, because I feel like a lot of this work has been done for us.
Okay, thank you. We do have a, we do have a committee person here that can chat about that.
Yeah, Denise. Over here, red shirt.
Raise your, raise your hand, Denise, so he can see you.
Give her a microphone.
There we go.
Good afternoon. I just would like to call any committee members that are still in the building to come forward.
Could you state your name, please?
Denise Barnard.
Thank you.
I am a member of the Three Parks Committee. To my left is Kendra Ziski, who's also a member. Also on this committee is Tess Storrs, Jeannie Agner, Megan Andrews, Mary LaFave. Here comes Tess. So, and Fran Thomas, I'm so sorry, and she's out of the country as we speak. We have, we went to, I went to the Select Board and as part of an ARPA committee member and asked for a $450,000 appropriation of the $1.2 million ARPA funds that the town received that we already have in the bank. The Select Board asked for people to be involved in this committee, and six and, six or seven of us came forward. We have a phenomenal committee. We have met every two weeks since August. We've been before the Select Board, I believe, three or four times. We have gotten quotes from, and Kendra might know this answer, from probably over 100 people. We've probably received quotes from over 100 people, from everything to tree cutting, tree limbing, new grass, bocce ball courts, pickleball courts, a water fountain, cleaning up the bathrooms, the baseball fields, the soccer fields, the playground. So, we have been meeting every two weeks. We have almost came up for a proposal before the Select Board, and we're not quite ready. We're still waiting for more quotes, because they asked us to receive three quotes for every project that we were doing. The first thing that we did is we hired a architect. Jack, I'm sorry, John Lynn, and he has been incredible, and he drew the space. I'm going to my notes. Someone asked about the acreage of the property. Now that the survey has been done, we know that the actual acreage is 3.13 acres. However, only 2.2 acres of this land can be used because of the banks, ravines, tree lines, and zoning required setbacks. Our main focus for our committee has been on Brown's Court. And we've gotten a lot of inputs. Our meetings are public, our minutes are public. We've had a lot of people write letters to us. We've welcomed everybody to come forward and give them a place at the table to say their piece. What else? We want to go forward. We have to allocate this money, I believe, and Jay, correct me if I'm wrong with the date, I believe it's December 31st, 2024. So, the money has to be allocated. Then we have, I believe, again, correct me, two years after we allocate the money to do all the projects. We have already run out of money. The first thing we did as a committee was we went to our Three Parks, and I have a lifelong resident of Richmond. I didn't know this until I started on this committee. Over at All Round Church, we only own the actual green. We do not own the sledding hill and/or the parking area. So, if you have any specific questions, please let us know. Please ask us now, we're here, we have information, we have all the documents from every meeting, from every minute, so please ask questions, so I, because I'm getting the old "you're done" sign from Mr. Buxton.
And just one point of clarification, we were only tasked with looking at it for recreation. We were not tasked with any of the housing discussion that has gone through the Select Board. Our task is only to look at it for recreation, and those funds were to be looked at for recreation.
Thank you. No, I didn't want to cut you off, you answered the question, but I want to make sure we're germane to the topic. There was a question over here on the side as well. Yes, please. Can you get them a microphone?
Hi, thanks. Emily Lush, and I just, I have a question about, there have been a few statements around affordable housing and the land then making the town of Richmond landlords. And I just, I'm curious to investigate or to look into the options within affordable housing, as there are models across the country that I'm not closely familiar with, but that where permanently affordable housing is put into a pool essentially, and depending on income eligibility, you're eligible to purchase the homes. So, you're not a landlord, but you're purchasing the homes, and I'm not, I'm not advocating for that being at Brown's Court, but I just am wanting to put that out there as to, and I guess the question is, why would this option turn us into landlords?
Thank you. Jay?
Okay, so, very good question. As I mentioned earlier, our housing assessment of Brown's Court has been, it looks like we'd shove 20 units in there. And that's about as far as we've officially gone. We have not gone so far as to sign a contract with any housing agency, we have not looked into being landlords. It's a, the subject is very much open. However, I would like to point out that in addition to the Three Parks Committee, we do have a Housing Committee. Connie and everybody else from the Housing, Connie. So, Connie Van Egan and the other members of the Housing Committee, you may recall those sheets that we were told we actually couldn't pass out in the room, but they have done a ton of work exploring housing options, and housing is not limited to us being landlords in Brown's Court. There are a lot of actions that we, as private individuals or as a community, could do to increase housing. But rather than rattle all that off, I would just encourage Connie, if you, if you want to, to weigh in.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for the first time on Article 14, the Advisory Article? In the back.
My name is Patty Brushett, and I'm going to take the courageous place of saying, I would really like this Left Board to investigate housing at Brown's Court. The median family income in Chittenden County is $88,000. Most of us could not afford to live in Richmond, buy a house in Richmond now. Most of the people in this room, okay? The most the bank will lend a family that is earning $88,000 is a $261,000 mortgage. That house does not exist. Police make $67,000. A beginning teacher makes $47,000. Young people and emergency responders cannot move here, and our retired folks can't find smaller housing options. I would like the town to contact, if, you know, here are a few things I would like the town to investigate if this advisory vote passes, and this, this is just for them to look into something. You know, this 20,000, this 20-unit thing that Jay is talking about is just a pencil on the back of a, of an envelope. This is, this is not anything that anybody researched, really, and we really don't know these options, for instance, that the woman over here was talking about. There could be a possibility that we could put five or eight family houses there. You know, we're just speculating here on what, you know, I think, I don't think it's big enough, right? So, I, I don't think we really do know. So, if it is passes, I would like the town to contact nonprofit housing developers to see if it is feasible to have family housing, parking, and a ball field. We don't really know. If it, if it is, I'd like to learn if we can prioritize some of this housing for emergency responders, followed by local teachers and seniors. I wonder if we could implement the Vermont Housing and Conservation Trust model of perpetual affordable housing, ownership through shared equity. Could housing be built on the edge of that beautiful ravine with views in both directions being lovely? If the answer to my questions is yes, if all the space we'll accommodate is housing and a green space, I will vote for that option over pickleball in the future, when we have that vote. But we really don't know the answers. So, for now, I will vote yes for the town to investigate housing at Brown's Court. Let's get the facts and make an informed decision. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. All the way in the back, I had, way against, by the pink box. Yes, yeah.
My name is Lisa Corey. I grew up in a Midwestern city and had never gone hiking or camping or even walking in the woods as a kid. As adults, my partner and I moved to Vermont with next to no money, and we easily found a small apartment, and eventually we're thrilled to find a house here in Richmond. That was in 1987. Today, this could never happen. I was thrilled to actually live in a storybook community nestled in beautiful hills and forests. I loved having old people, young people, rich and poor, and in-between people as my neighbors. And I loved that people cared about each other and volunteered to help at the schools, the park, the trails, town committees, in the early recycling, other areas. This was the place I really wanted to be. Today, I love that we also have a market, restaurants, stores, bank, library, schools, parks, trails, an unbelievable bakery, and more, all within walking distance of my home on Cochran Road. It's remarkable to see the large numbers of people coming to Richmond for our amazing recreational opportunities. And living on Cochran Road, I get the special view of that. After the flood last summer, my current neighbors came to help clean up. This is still the place I want to be. And now, I'm facing a question about how much I care about people who have no home, who might be young or old or in-between, who may be staying in a tent or motel or on friend's couch, or maybe just lost a job or a partner and have to give up their unaffordable apartment. Do I want to share my town with them? Do I want to stretch my feelings of what a storybook community is to include people who really need it? Am I willing to support initiatives to create affordable housing? Or even to investigate it? Arguments can be made to not have affordable housing in any spot in Richmond, but I'm saying yes to affordable housing in available locations in the village. We can have a storybook town and- We can have a storybook town and have space for people who can't currently afford our housing. It's the right thing.
Thank you. Right up front here, one of our ballot clerks had her hand up. Way up front.
I'm Terri Farr, and as we consider voting on this, I want people to consider the president's assets, people who give donations to the town and have those donations taken away. Personally, I think that's wrong, and I don't think there's any way to make that right.
Thank you. Yes, please, go ahead.
I was hoping to hear an amendment to this article.
Jim?
Mike?
A little closer.
I'll just speak up. I was hoping to hear an amendment to this article, and that amendment would be to strike the language of Brown's Court. Should this town study housing? We have a housing committee. We have a housing committee, a planning commission, and a state need for housing in this town and elsewhere. And we, the people in the planning commission, the people in the housing committee are doing good work, but it's not enough. We need support from the entire town. This is the, this is the future of Richmond that we're talking about. This has the potential to do away with Richmond. If we lose residents slowly, steadily, without housing, we will disappear. And I don't want that to happen, I don't think you do either. So if someone would be willing to offer an amendment to this article to strike Brown's Court alone, just should this town study housing, leave Brown's Court out of it, let's see what people think.
Okay, thank you. Up on top of the bleachers, and then I'll go back in the back corner.
Art Hamlin. I think anybody in this room that's fortunate enough to have holdings that they could donate to the town have to consider what's going on here. You donate it, and you say it's for a certain operation of recreation or housing or whatever, that can all be changed after you're gone. That's not right. This has been thought out, worked on, people have come to the conclusion that it's not feasible for housing. It's obvious, I mean, all, everybody's saying the same thing. Why are we going to launch more investigations into this? It blows my mind, we're wasting our time. That's my opinion. I think it should be recreation, because that's where it was supposed to have been, and that's where it should stay.
Thank you. In the back corner over here, please.
Hello, thank you. As many of you might already know, I did a campaign on Front Porch Forum to save the park. I 100% believe in just what everybody has said about it was donated for a purpose, and we should respect that purpose if we want donations in the future. I, though, 100% support affordable housing. I have helped construct and design and build affordable housing for over 30 years. So I'm going to stand behind that, and I'm going to give you some examples of where we can investigate in the future. But I think this article has to remain about Brown's Court so that that committee can move forward, the Recreation Committee can move forward with what they are going to make recommendations to the Select Board on what to do with that $450,000. So we need to be clear about the direction of Brown's Court today so that that can be worked out. Now, there are three places in this town that really need to be investigated. Richmond Terrace is one of the ones that was previously mentioned. They have 15 units on 3.6 acres. They have plenty of land to expand if they so choose to. The problem is, then you've got Borden Street. They could also remove some of those small, some of those structural, structures that they have now and go up with them to increase housing there. So we have affordable housing areas in our community that could expand if they want to, but I need you to understand why they don't want to. Last I checked, we have the highest water and sewer rates in the state of Vermont. Cathedral is not looking to expand, Champlain Housing isn't looking to come here, they are not looking for that because of other limitations, not just water and sewer, but the cost of the construction as well. My last point, on page 25 of your annual report, at the bottom of that, it's about Richmond Village Housing Note Receivable. The town of Richmond is owed $300,000 from the last affordable housing project they participated in. They participated in that in 1999. That note has been kicked down, the can of that note has been kicked down to not be able to be collected until March of 2029. If we care about affordable housing, we would make the affordable housing that was created pay back that loan and use that to create more affordable housing. I support affordable housing, I think we need to plan it and do it right. I know we have a housing committee that's been hardworking, but this field and this park is for park purposes, and I really strongly want us to save this park and put affordable housing where we can. There is other areas in town that can be on water and sewer, that can be affordable. It's not up to us to take the park away, though, so please respect what it was donated for and the people that use it and want to use it in the future and the future generations. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments regarding, right here in the front? Way up in the front.
All the way up here, come on.
Front row. Right here. You yield?
Hi, Stephanie Hartsfield, Richmond. Just wanted to say a couple things. One, a correction to some of the points, there's a Recreation Committee for the town, and then there's the Three Parks Committee, and I think they're getting confused and misused. So I just want to maybe make sure that when things are recorded, that we're talking about the right committee and who's doing what for the record. I understand how sacred Brown's Court is to everyone, and it's wonderful. And I think we should recognize that we are also losing another green space that was donated that is of no control of our own, and that is volunteers' green. It is, not just the trees are leaving, but the entire green space will not be usable pretty soon due to client, whatever you believe, the river is taking that over as it's intended to, but it's changing rapidly, and I think we need to understand that's impacting some people's housing, it's impacting the playground, the bathrooms, we can't keep fixing them year over year, we're wasting money. So our green spaces are in jeopardy, whether we like it or not, and they were donated, and our housing is unaffordable, and we need to figure that out. So I would like to propose an amendment that, instead of looking at, propose an amendment that the Select Board take into consideration looking at opportunities to use the ARPA funds for looking at affordable housing options, I don't know if I can do this, affordable housing options in general. Because we're losing, I don't know, I don't know how to make an amendment. Just look at affordable housing. I can't fit ARPA in there.
We need to make sure it's germane to the article.
Okay, so amend it that they look at affordable housing options within the town of Richmond.
Yeah.
And remove Brown's Court.
Go ahead.
Stephanie's free to make her amendment, but I'd advise against it because the Park, the Three Parks Committee does need to know specifically in relation to Brown's Court whether they can plan for using Brown's Court or whether there's still a chance housing will stick in there. However, however, we do have an article on the warning today, All Other Business, and we could absolutely bring up a resolution during that time to say, for the love of God, please investigate housing in general, it does, but, but this specific question really does need to stay about what will we do with Brown's Court.
Right. Could we, could we, are you okay with that, ma'am? Bringing it up in other business? It seems to be more germane in that regard.
Well, my, my only question is, I guess I want to say, I was at the meeting when the housing committee, as a staff member of the housing committee, presented to this left board. But this conversation can go on forever, I guess.
Well, we need to address the article that's, as, as written here.
We should vote on this as written, and I agree with my opinion.
In the, in the other business?
Yeah.
You're good with that, cool. Okay, can I have the microphone up here quickly? Right in the front row. Donna, stand up. There, that, that way he can see you.
Hi, I'm Donna Sax, I happen to live on Brown's Court. I'd like to call the question.
Okay? The question, wait, hang on, hang on, folks, hang on. The question was called, is there a second to that? Okay? There is, there is a second, we need, we need a two-thirds majority in which to call the question. So all those in favor of calling a question, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Okay, the question has been called, hang on, the question has been called, so therefore we're moving right to the article. Let me remind you what the article states. Advisory Article 14, shall the town of Richmond investigate developing housing on the town-owned property of Brown's Court? All those in favor of Article 14, so signify by saying aye. Those opposed, no.
No.
The noes seem to have it, the noes do have it, is there a question? The motion, the article has failed. Or, yes, the article has failed. Okay, folks, now, it being, before anybody gets up, it being 12:42 in the afternoon, I have been advised of about 30 minutes ago that lunch is ready. And I would entertain, before we entertain a motion, please, 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 hang in here, you're all hungry, go get lunch. It's important, we didn't have, we haven't had lunch in the last few years, and we want to ensure that, that happens. So, yes.
Way up top. Way up, boy scouts.
Hang on, before everybody leaves, please, please settle down here for a second. So can we get a microphone to the top there, please? Go ahead, Dolores.
My name is Dolores Carter. I would like to state that before everyone leaves decides to go home after they have some lunch or just go home and have lunch, but not be here for one of the more important items that we have to vote on, the town center renovation.
Right.
So how are we going to do that?
I'll, I'll, I'll get to that in a second. It being, this is always the tricky part of being the moderator. The guy that was sitting in his seat before had that problem, too, is that, is that, you know, we got, we, we, I would entertain a motion in which to recess for lunch and then reconvene an appropriate amount of time in which to deal, because we do have three more articles, folks, in which to deal with. So I, I recognize that, but I would entertain a motion in which to recess for a period of time. Please, can we, microphone right here.
Chris Granda, I would like to move that we recess for a period of, what?
Forty-five minutes.
Forty-five minutes for lunch and then reconvene?
Is there a second to that? Okay? All those in favor of recessing for 45 minutes, please so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. We stand recessed until 1:30. Please, here's the project, subject to reduction by grants and aid or other state and federal funds and then available to the town for this purpose. Now, this is to be voted on by Australian ballots, but if I, if I return to my preamble, you'll recall that based on state statutes changed in 2008, we can have a discussion on an Australian-balloted item. In order to have that discussion, we're going to have to have the article moved to the floor. So do I hear a, a motion in which to move Article 12 to the floor? Your brother. Is there a second? There is a second as well? So Article 12 has now been moved to the floor. If there are no objections, there is a presentation from the Town Center and Library Committee that we will entertain briefly.
Who? Are you a resident in Richmond?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
She's messing with you.
Yes, the floor is yours.
Well, thank you all for being here. Isn't it wonderful to have town meeting again? You know? You know, this is, today is about twice the audience that we had last year on Monday night, you know? Just saying. So my name is Jeff Forward, I'm on the Select Board, and I'm also the chair of, the current chair of the Town Center and Library Committee. So we, we are the ones that have put this proposal together that's in front of you that you'll be voting on today. Our original charge was to evaluate how to best house our town and government services. We weren't charged with looking at housing, we weren't charged at looking at, for a different site for our, our town services. We were charged with looking at this site, not necessarily the Town Center building, but this site to see what would be the most cross-effective and best way to house our town services in one location. One of the interesting things about the Town Center, if you think about it, the Town Center building, it is literally the center of town, you know, so it's equidistant to just about everywhere in town, and really a valuable site because of it. So what I'm going to do today is I'm going to give a brief overview of what, what the committee has done and, and what this proposal is. And my intent, and the committee's intent, has been to try to present as much information as possible to folks before today so you could have, you could make an informed decision. So I'll do a brief presentation, and then I'm happy to answer any and all questions. So these are all the previous and current members of the committee. So just a little history, the back, the, the first half of the Town Center building, it was built as a school in 1907, and then the second half was put on in 19, this dispute between 1911 or 1914. I think the picture is taken in 1914, I think they built it in 1911. What's interesting about this to me is in 1908, there was a catastrophic fire in Richmond that took out the entire commercial block where the Masonic building is and where Sweet Simone is and all that. It burned to the ground, every one of them. It was a wood-framed building before, and several other buildings around it. And yet, only a few years later, did the, the people who lived in town at that time had the, the determination to build back and build back better and build this building. That's always impressed me. More recently, the, the Richmond Elementary School built the building next door, the, the new Richmond Elementary School, and they vacated this building in the late 80s. At that time, there was a discussion, a debate about what to do with this public building, and it was decided by the voters to, to move our town services into this building. They, they were in the basement of the Masonic block. Shortly thereafter, the post office was looking for more space, they were in what is now the dentist's office, and they were looking for more space. They put out a request for proposals, and the town submitted a proposal for them to move into the 1950s. and the town submitted a proposal for them to move into the 1950s edition where they are now today. Shortly after that, the Chittenden East Supervisory Union was looking for more space, and they decided to rent the third floor of the Town Center Building. And they stayed there until 2019, where they went to Underhill, to, they moved their offices to a vacant school there. That left the question for the Select Board of what to do with the empty space. So, they appointed this committee, the Town Center and Library Committee, to evaluate what we should do with the building and what we should do with our town services. And this committee has done a lot. The first thing we did is, we had a building assessment done of that building, the library building, and the firehouse, to determine what conditions they were in and, you know, what needed to happen to them. That's still a valid document, and I'm hoping something that the Select Board will go back to. We held a pretty extensive, what's called a visioning process, of asking the community, "Well, what do you want? What would you like to see on this site?" Christine Wernick spearheaded that effort, and we got a lot. We got a lot of comments back. We found out that this building is actually pretty well-loved in town. And people felt pretty strongly about having our town services in this location and in this building, if at all possible. More recently, well, and then we did a, there was extra space from town services, and so the Select Board asked us to come up with a list of criteria, a process for evaluating what other uses of the extra space that we had. How should we evaluate that? It was the Select Board's decision, but they asked us to help them figure it out. We hired an architectural firm, Black River Design, out of Montpelier. They helped us evaluate whether we should tear the building down and build new. We learned that that would be actually much more costly than doing this, this renovation project. We evaluated, I think it was a dozen, maybe 15 different plans for the site. And what the committee landed on was to live within the footprint of the building and look at renovating that space for our town services and any other space that could be used for other services. And from the get-go, the committee has looked at grant sources and different ways of trying to fund this project. More recently, we focused on completing the plan and trying to communicate that plan. So, that's what we've been doing for the last two months. We've held, I don't know, half dozen, eight different tours of the building. We've done many presentations. We've gone to the Friday Food Affair. Our goal is to try to explain what it is that we're proposing and to answer as many questions as possible, which is why I'm here today. So, most folks will probably know how we're using the building now. It houses all of our town services outside of the Highway Department and the Fire Department. And also, we have several tenants. We considered the post office being a governmental, an essential governmental service. They provide us with almost $100,000 a year in rent, which is really extremely valuable. But beyond just the dollar amount, the post office is a really terrific anchor to our commerce in the village. You know, it generates a lot of foot traffic, and it really complements the other services in the building. We, one of the things we did, we surveyed the businesses in the village about what was most important to them, and that the post office is a really high priority for the businesses in the village. Beyond that, we have MMCCTV. We learned how useful those guys are. Thank you. They're recording this today, right now. And they record, broadcast and record most of our town committee meetings. They have been extremely helpful during the pandemic and beyond. And they pay market rates. They pay market rates for their space. It's about $15,000 a year. Beyond that, there are more donations. There are more community organizations that we kind of know and love. The Historical Society was really looking for a place to store all of the historical artifacts they have and display them. And it's pretty cool right now, that they've got a lot of stuff, particularly on the third floor, of historical artifacts. That's where I got the pictures earlier on. We also, the Senior Center, you know, one of the things that I really love about the Senior Center is they don't focus on a building. They focus on programming. You know, many senior centers...
Hey, folks, if you could just lower the volume so we can, everyone can hear the presentation, that would be helpful. Continue, Jeff. Thanks.
Thank you. Many places around the country have senior centers, but oftentimes, what they do is they build or buy a building, and then they spend half or more of their effort and their annual budget on maintaining that building. And this senior center decided, I think really quite cool, they decided to focus on programming rather than a building. And so, they have an office. And it's not a very big office, but it's plenty for them, for their administrative tasks. Similarly, our Community Cares camp has an office, very similar. And then, right now, Radiate Art Space is in the basement. One of the things that's really difficult with this plan is if we do a large enough renovation, what our floodplain regulations require is that we bring the building up to flood standards, which means you can't have occupied space in the basement. You can't have mechanicals, you can't have boilers, you can't have stuff in the basement, and you particularly can't have occupied space. So, we would have to find additional space in the rest of the building for Radiate Art Space. Right now, the plan is to have about half of the third floor be tenant space, these various different tenants. How it gets divvied up has not been figured out yet exactly, but we think we can accommodate all of these same tenants going forward. We can use the basement for storage. And storage is not nothing, you know? Right now, it's pretty chock-a-block full of stuff. And, you know, even if the stuff that's in the basement isn't worth a lot financially, it's worth a lot to the organizations that use it, like the Little League, and our Community Cares stores a lot of stuff down there. We will be able to continue to do that. This is probably what people are most interested in, is the money. It's a lot. So, we, the way we came up with this budget is we worked with the architects on conceptual plans, enough of a conceptual plan to be able to put it to a cost estimator to come up with dollars, dollar amounts for the total construction. That cost estimator used about 300 different line items to come up with the final number. So, there are various different hard costs on the left-hand side, and I'm happy to answer questions about that. And on the right-hand side are more soft costs. So, things like, this is an older building. If any of you have worked on an older house, you know that there are surprises out there whenever you do something. And so, we have a 15% contingency, which is not nothing. It's $1 million in this project. But we felt that it was responsible to budget for it because the last thing you want to do is to get three-quarters, four-fifths of the way through the project, and then find you need more money. You know, the last thing we would want to do is go back to the voters to ask for more money. There were miscellaneous costs. One thing that people, I think, had questions about is whether or not we allocated money for moving costs. This is, we're talking about a complete renovation of the building, which will be disruptive, certainly. But we did budget $100,000 to move the folks out while, during construction, and move them back in afterwards. You know, one of the silver linings of the pandemic is that we learned how to work remotely. Our staff is used to working remotely. Can't move the vault. We'll have to work around that. But a lot of our staff can work in different places, and we have different spaces around town. You know, one thought would be that we would have our Select Board meetings, for example, in the library, instead of in the Town Center Building during construction. And finally, we did, the estimate that was come up with, by the construction estimator, was done last September. You know, and since that time, we could have put this up for a vote in November, and the committee decided we needed more time to communicate. We needed more time to explain what this process was. So, we delayed that vote until now, until today. So, in order to account for inflation, and anybody who's done any construction over the last year or two, construction costs have gone through the roof. Don't we all wish we had done all of our construction costs, you know, two years ago? But it wasn't possible to do that. And so, we built in a seven-and-a-half percent inflation factor on the hard costs to take into account construction inflation. That comes up to a large number. It's $9.8 million. And what that translates to is, it depends on how you finance it. We don't have to spend $9.8 million, but that's what our budget is. So, if, for example, when we, we put it out to bid, the next step of the process would be to do final construction drawings in the spring and summer, and likely put it out to bid in the fall. If the bids came in lower, woohoo, we win. That would be great, and we wouldn't need to necessarily borrow this much money. If we were to get grants, and we, I'll show you, we've been actively engaged in trying to get grants for this project, that could offset the final cost, and we could borrow less. How it's, how we borrow matters. The typical way most towns borrow money is through the municipal bond bank. And bonds are funny. The way the repayment schedule is on a bond is it's a fixed principal payment and then a declining interest payment, which means that at the first year is the most you're going to pay. And then, over the life of the bond, it goes down to, at the last year in a 30-year bond, is about half of what it was to begin with. I've always thought that was crazy, you know? It's not like any mortgage you ever have. Your mortgage is flat over the period that you borrowed the money for. And that really worked in my favor, you know, because that $350, when I first started my mortgage, seemed like a lot. And then, by 20 years later, it didn't seem like so much. But that's not the way the bond works. We could borrow money like that. We could borrow money. That's why there's confusion on the language. It doesn't say specifically how to borrow the money. It defers that decision to the Select Board. So, we could borrow it as a note that had a fixed cost and principal payment over 30 years, in which case, the first-year payment would be less, you know, considerably less than this. Or, we could borrow that amount over 20 years, which would be very similar to the first-year payment, except you'd only be paying it for 20 years, and that option would save the town about $2 million worth of interest. So, we felt that, committee felt that this was not a decision for the committee, and it's a decision that can be deferred to find out whether we're actually doing a project or not. You know, there's some thought that interest payments might come down, if you've been reading the papers, over the course of this year. We could delay. Most construction projects, my, when I did my house, I did a construction loan while I was during construction. And then, when I finished that, I closed on a mortgage. So, that could be a year or two out, you know? So, there are decisions along the way that the Select Board will need to make, but what we're presenting here is the worst-case scenario. So, that $96 per $100,000 worth of valuation is based on a four-and-a-half percent interest rate on a bond. Highest payment in the first year, and then about half of that in year 30. So, and I can get more detail into that. I know it's confusing. We've been asked, though, how come we didn't apply for grants for this before we put it up for a vote? You know, I don't know if anybody's ever applied for a grant. It's a lot of work. So, number one on my list would be FEMA. You know, FEMA, you know, we have a good case to make that what this project, one of the goals of this project is to do some flood mitigation measures so that we don't, you know, fill up our basement with floodwater. And we can do that. We've learned that we can do that, even though it is in the floodplain. If we take measures to mitigate that flood damage, we're allowed to do that within regulation. But it's expensive. And I can get into the details if you want, but it's an expensive part of the project. So, what we would like to do is we would like to apply to FEMA for a flood mitigation grant. Imagine what it's like to work with FEMA to apply for a million-dollar grant, you know? So, in the meantime, what this committee has been focused on is finalizing this project and communicating what it is. And if it moves forward, we're totally committed to applying for grant funding. But that's a whole nother job. Other potential grant sources, you know, many of you may know I'm kind of an energy guy. There's an energy program for municipalities. You know, the state is rolling it out. They haven't rolled it out yet. I think we're eligible for up to $500,000 for that. But we won't know until they roll out the program, and we won't know until we apply for it. Similarly, the Americans with Disabilities Act. The library trustees, God love them, they're actually applying for a grant to improve the handicapped access to the library right now. And if they get that, then, you know, that could take $100,000, $150,000 off of our budget. But they won't know if they get that until later on this summer. So, my point in all of this is that we don't have to spend $9.8 million, but we have to ask for it. Because we don't know whether we'll get those grants or what, whether, you know, it's, we can even apply for them. One grant that we did apply for that was interesting, we did it three times. Does anybody know what Congressional Discretionary Spending is? That's better known as earmarks, right? Senator Leahy, God love him, he brought earmarks back to Congress. And when he did, said, "Hey, how about us?" And so, we applied for one then. And it was in his package, but it didn't get very far. We applied a second time to Senator Sanders. It actually got on a $1.8 million Congressional Discretionary Spending Grant. Got on his shortlist, that he advanced through the process. And then, it fell off the table in Congress. We applied again this past year with Senator Welch. Can anybody tell me where the earmarks are going to go forward? Whether Congress is ever going to be able to decide on anything, I don't know. So, you know, I don't think we can count on it, but we'll try, you know? This committee is committed to trying. So, my, you know, my point is, is that the reason why we don't have grant monies in hand is because, A, some of those grant programs aren't even up and running, and B, it's a much more compelling case if you actually get to do the project. If you're asking for money from some funding source, and you don't know if you're going to do the project, it's not, doesn't make a very compelling case. So, the question we have today is whether to move forward with this project or not. It is on Australian ballot, and we'll know at 7:30 tonight whether we move forward with this project or not. And my purpose here today is to answer any lingering questions that you may have. Okay, that's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on the presentation or comments?
My goodness, I'm good at it.
Do we have one here? Do we have one here? Yeah, how about we get a microphone right behind you, sir?
Hello? My name is Chris Dubos, and I have a question. When you consider the renovation of the, of the facility in general, are you renovating the post office space to meet their demands, or to meet the town's demands, or how do you handle that? Because it seems like it's half the building.
Actually, the post office has not made a demand on us. What we, what we've learned is the way the floodwaters get into the building is there is a pipe tunnel that goes around the perimeter of the post office addition, and that pipe tunnel is below the floodplain, and there are holes into it. So what has been recommended that we do as far as flood mitigation for the entire building is to fill that pipe tunnel. In order to fill that pipe tunnel, it has to be done from the inside. So that's going to trash the space on the inside. The second piece of the post office that, you know, I feel is a very necessary repair is the roof membrane on the roof is really old. It's been patched many times. It's about the end of its useful life. The insulation in the post office roof is about that much. It's about an inch, right? If you were to improve that up to current code standards, you would want to have that much. You'd want to have a lot more insulation. In order to put the insulation on, we would have to increase the, reinforce the rafters in the roof to accommodate the snow load. So in the post office space alone, I was really hoping that we weren't going to be, have to touch the post office. I was wrong. We have to completely trash the roof, and we have to completely trash the floor. And we'll have to move them out when we're doing that, but it's, it's, if we want to use that space at all, we need to do a lot of repair on it. It's worth it because we get, you know, we get $100,000 a year from them, and they want to be there. We've talked, we've talked with the, the postmaster who's there, she's wonderful. She grew up in town. They love the space. They really like the space, and we really like having them. We've communicated with them every step of the way along this process. It won't be their decision, you know? The two agencies that I'm not looking forward to working with are FEMA and the U.S. Postal Service. You know, their, 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 their agency, I think, is in Connecticut or someplace. But we are very committed to doing whatever we can to keep them here. You know, we, we see them as really valuable.
Thank you. Any other questions regarding the, the article that's been presented? Okay, oh, there's one right there in the center. Guys, can we get a microphone in the center aisle, please?
Thank you, Jeff and the committee, for all the work that you've put into this.
Can you please?
Oh, sorry, Lauren Esserman. And first of all, I just wanted to thank the committee for all the work that they put into this. I know I've, I've read on Front Porch Forum, I have a sense that there, you know, there's a real division of opinion, but I, I just want to first express appreciation for all the time and, you know, thought that went into it.
Thank you.
And secondly, I'm just, a point of information, I'm just curious, if this fails today, what are the committee's thoughts about what, where we go with this next?
Okay. So we meet on Thursday. We've been meeting twice a month for five years to get to this point, and the committee doesn't have a good idea of what to go next. You know, I think that, you know, personally, what I think we're going to need is we're going to need direction from the select board. What do you want to do? You know, it's, you know, that we, when we ask the architects to look at that, there really isn't a lot of good options here, you know? The challenge with this project is one thing is connected to the other. So for example, you know, there is no fresh air ventilation in the building, none. It's all recirculation, ductwork. And if you were to replace the heating system, you'd want to replace the windows as well, otherwise you'd be heating the outdoors. The windows are 100 years old. You can take a window and you can go like this. That's not very energy efficient. If you were to replace the windows without doing the heating and ventilating system, you'd be exacerbating the already bad indoor air quality issues that are already there. There is literally soot coming out of some of the, the ductwork. So that's not good. If you're going to replace the HVAC system, it's all up in the ceilings. Wouldn't you want to do lighting at that time? Wouldn't you want to put in the fire alarm? Wouldn't you want to put in sprinklers? Each one of those projects is terribly disruptive. And so what the, what the committee decided, and you'll, you'll have to tell us whether this is the right way to go, what the committee decided is that doing all of it at the same time was the most cost-effective approach to doing this. Otherwise, you'd have to go back in subsequent time and spend more money doing individual projects and be more disruptive to all of the occupants. So you will tell us whether that's okay or not.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on the article? Right here in the center?
Brian Burnell, how come, if we're not going towards the historical side of saving the building, we didn't go for tearing it down and starting over?
Okay. So we looked at that. We did look at the, the cost and benefit of tearing it down and building another building. What our architects told us, if we were to do that, it would cost us $2 to $3 million more to do that. Part of the plans that we looked at included adding an addition on the building, adding another building on site. When we asked them that question specifically, new versus renovation, what they came back at us with is it would cost us $2 to $3 million more to build new. I mean, the good news about this building is that the foundation is good, the roof is good, and the walls are good. It's just everything else that needs to be replaced, you know? So for better or worse, that's, it's the truth.
Thank you. Up on the bleachers, microphone up on the bleachers, there we go.
Oh, yeah, Peter Moore, Williams Hill Road. So question, if you just fixed the flood, if you just fixed the flooding issue, or could you just fix the flooding issue and leave everything for somewhere down the road?
Okay, so.
And I understand it says, you said that it's all kind of connected, but I've, if you could just part it out, if that's, if that's like, if you had to pick, it sounds to me from a little bit that you've said, it sounds like that's kind of like the, what's really driving this at this point? And what, is that a fix that can be done, and how much would it cost?
Okay. I don't know exactly how much it would cost, but I can tell you the kinds of things that are connected with flood mitigation. One is the post office, that pipe tunnel. The other, the other aspect is we cannot keep the, the mechanical room in the basement, and so we have to relocate the mechanical room, which means we have to build a new mechanical room. The proposal is to put it in a corner of the post office space. And if you're going to do that, then you're going to want to put in a new heating system, right? The, the existing boilers are about 10 years old, they're natural gas boilers, and one of the things we heard in many comments was that we, there were a lot of folks who wanted to get away from fossil fuels. And so what this proposal includes is heating and cooling the building with heat pumps. In order to do that, you need to put in a different kind of ductwork. You need to have, if you're going to do, you've got to have ventilation. So we're talking about, in order to deal with the floodwaters, we need to do the HVAC, we need to do the windows, we need to do the, the perimeter of the post office. If you're going to do the perimeter of the post office, you might as well do the roof of the post office. We have to do, some of the site work is relative to stormwater management. You have to deal with that. It's like the knee bone is collected, connected to the thigh bone, you know? It's, it, we, we struggled, believe me, the, the committee struggled with this. We did not, when we got this number, it was not a very happy day for the committee. But what, when it was all was said and done, we strongly believe that the best way to move forward is to do all of it, not piecemeal. Best, that's the best I got.
Thank you. Any other questions about the article? Yep, right up there.
Hi there, Kyle Werner. I live on Jericho Road and walk by this facility most every day. You might recognize our train of car, babies and dogs going by. So I was looking into this a bunch, as obviously there's been a lot of discussion on Front Porch Forum and throughout the town. And it's, it's a tough thing for me to, to understand the dollar amount. I'm not so worried about the actual cost that's displayed in this proposal. What I want to know is how does this compare to maybe other town centers around the country or around Vermont especially? Specifically, there's a not-bad comp not too far away. South Burlington just built a new city center, which includes a library, senior center, beautiful auditorium, and a facility for their town hall. They spent, they spent $20 million through the pandemic to build that facility for 50,000 square feet. My, my curiosity with this is the architects suppose that it's going to cost, I calculate, $12 million to tear this building down and build new, to build the same square footage, per the report. And that calculates out to $1,000 a square foot to build what is, you know, a very similar facility to what we have now, but brand new with no modern heating and cooling and sealed building envelope. I'm curious how this renovation is costing us so much more than South Burlington, who got, to my eyes, a very beautiful facility. Their price was only $400 per square foot. So my, my main issue with this is not the cost. I'm happy to, to pay. I think Richmond deserves a, a town center that will serve us for the future. But I want to make sure that those dollars are spent, and we're getting a great value for that, for my kids and for, for the other folks in this town. So I'm, I'm curious if, how much of this is really hinging on, on that one architect's proposal that it might cost $3 million more, when right down the road in South Burlington, they were able to build a bigger, pretty nice, brand-new facility for less than half the price that we have quoted here?
Well, for one thing, the building is 20,000 square feet, okay? Our building is 20,000 square feet, a little bit less than half of what, pardon? Well, I mean, I would argue that, that storage is usable space. It's just not, you know, it's not Class A, you know, Class 1 office space. For two, South Burlington did that, we actually looked at South Burlington. We looked at South Burlington, we looked at Waterbury. We looked at, the most comparable building that we looked at was the Hartford Town Hall. It's a similar-aged school where they did a total renovation on it, I want to say, eight years ago or so. They spent about $5 million on that, okay? That was eight years ago. You know, if you've, if you've looked at construction pricing over the last two years, it's really shot up a lot, a lot, a lot. So we trusted in our, our professional firm. We have very good, I think the committee felt very comfortable with Black River Design. They were terrific to work with. They took their conceptual design and gave it to a professional construction estimator. We didn't feel, and it's like 300 line items on that construction estimate, we didn't feel that we could go and pick out, well, could you get cheaper this or cheaper that? You know, this doesn't include, you know, gold toilets. This is, what this proposal is about is structural and essential services for the building, and with that, we'll get a much nicer building, you know? Just replacing the windows alone will really dress up that building a lot. And what we're proposing doing with windows specifically is to replace them with clad windows so that we won't have to paint them. We'll be able to remove the, the storm windows and have clad windows and reduce the, the annual maintenance that we don't really do, that we really should be doing.
Thank you. Any other questions about the Article 12, right here in the center? Right behind you, sir.
Steve Smith, was there an analysis of annual maintenance and, and heating costs, savings before and after the renovation? You know, you're going to add insulation, you're going to have more efficient heating systems, you know? Was there, was that anywhere factored in?
We're due to have an energy audit doing, done on the building, like right now, during that, that state program that I mentioned for energy. The first step of that program is to do an energy audit on the building that would document a baseline for what the building is. Of how much it'll cost in the, in the future is hard to say, you know? So if we're replacing natural gas with electric heat pumps, the electricity is going to go up. You know, the natural gas will be eliminated, and that'll be good. One of the things that we have done with this building over the past, I don't know, 10, 15 years or so, is we had, we had several weatherization projects done on it. The insulation in the, the attic of the historic building is quite good, and as is the walls have dense back cellulose blown in the walls. The windows, not so great, you know? So we would be reducing the heat load, there are 77 windows in this building. So taking them out, putting in efficient windows, filling the space around it is going to change the heat load dramatically. Putting in a more efficient heating system will change the loads significantly. Adding ventilation, fresh air ventilation, which we kind of learned during the pandemic, that's a good thing to have, is fresh air ventilation, that will add to the load. So there's some pluses and some minuses. I forget, I think we spent about $20,000 a year on heat, something like that, about $10,000 a year on electricity, I forget. That'll change, but there's, there's no way to save enough money to offset the cost of this bond.
Thank you. Any other questions? Go ahead.
So I have one more thing that I would like to say.
Well, okay, let me speak and then you. I have, in another lifetime, worked in environmental health and safety services, and I worry about the health of the employees in the building, because we're talking about a World War I era building with a lot of deficiencies and no ventilation system, and we're asking people to work in there. And frankly, I see it as a lawsuit waiting to happen if somebody gets sick. I think from a health and safety point of view alone, we need to do some serious looking at some of the things Jeff just talked about, the windows and the ventilation system. And as he's pointed out, it's kind of like a game of Jenga. You know, you pull, you pull one stick out, the whole thing's affected. You do the windows, you need to do the ventilation system, you're tearing it up. If you do this, why not do that? There comes a point where you need to be pragmatic and say, we don't really want to be telling people in the year 2050 that they're going to work in a building that is continuing to fall apart around them.
Thank you. Any other questions? We have one down here. Go ahead.
Jeff, I know you've talked about the old features of the building. What bothers me a lot is that there's no sprinkler system, there's no real usable fire escape. We have possibly a calamity waiting for us, and I don't want to see that. And it's also not very human-friendly as far as its quality of, air quality and so forth. I think all those things go away if we do the renovation, correct?
The, the intent would be to address all of those issues at the same time, and we, we have not been able to figure out how to do that piecemeal, you know? And if we were to do it piecemeal, I mean, you know, I, I got to tell you, it, this committee has been meeting twice a month for five years to get to this point. If you were to start over tomorrow, which we might have to, I'm not sure who would do that, and I'm not sure how long it would take. So, I mean, I, this is, this is our best shot.
Thank you.
The one last thing that I'll say is, there's no question, this is a lot of money, you know? It really gave the committee pause. But there's reason to believe that we might actually do this. If you look back on the history of Richmond, there were people, are actually do this. If you look back on the history of Richmond, there were people around in 1813 that invested in the Round Church. There are people around in 1879 that invested in the Universalist Church, which is now our our library. There are people in 1911 that after that fire, built the second half of this school. Those none of those projects were inexpensive projects. But they were they were done by the people who lived in this town at that time as legacies to future generations that we're still benefiting from. To my mind, this is our time. We have an opportunity to invest in a legacy project for future generations.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, I'll take a motion in which to cease discussion. Do I have a second? Very good. We'll cease discussion and move to Article 13. Article 13, shall the town of Richmond vote to approve funding the Conservation Reserve Fund by adding one cent to the municipal tax rate in the 2024-2025 fiscal year? Again, this is to be voted on by Australian ballot, and due to state statutes, we can have a discussion on this. So if I could, if if I could have a a motion in which to move this, if you if you choose to discuss it, I'll entertain a motion in which to have a discussion. Is there such a motion?
There is not.
No motion in which to discuss Article 13.
Okay.
Very good. So we don't have to cease discussion now. Article 15, to transact any other town business that may legally come before come legally before this meeting. Now, folks, this is a this this is, I want to emphasize this, this is, these are non-binding, non-binding things. They're not warned. We can't take any binding action on them. So please keep that in mind as as you present anything under this article, whether it be resolutions or anything else. It can't be non-binding. I saw a hand up here. Would you have a microphone down here, please?
My name is Connie Van Egan. I'm a resident of Richmond and also the clerk of the Housing Committee. The Housing Committee is a subcommittee of the Planning Commission, which reports to the Select Board. And I'm making this motion based on previous conversation and the desires of the Housing Committee, which met last week. The motion is as follows. Shall the Richmond Housing Committee engage diverse members of the Richmond community in town-wide conversations about housing to share both the needs and the options relevant to Richmond?
Okay, can we can I have that? Just recall that this is advisory only, so it's not a not a binding thing. Is there a second to this? Actually, let me let me read the let me read the motion. Shall the Richmond Housing Committee engage diverse members of the Richmond community in a town-wide conversations about housing to share both the needs and options relevant to Richmond? Is there a second? Seems to be a second. Okay. Is there any any discussion? You, as the maker of the motion, may may speak first.
I think there's been conversations taking place in this community about the importance of housing. The question is, is how do we move forward? And in a community like this, the strongest way to move forward would appear to be engaging people like yourselves and also people not like yourselves who live in Richmond in deciding what kind of community we want to be with respect to housing. So I ask that you support this motion.
And again, I'll remind folks, when we ultimately do vote on this, is this is advisory for our Select Board in which to take this information. Any other discussion on this motion? Go ahead.
Connie, thank you. I'd like to point out, too, that as our population remains about the same, and inflation continues, costs go up, we've got more cost to be paid by the same number of people. You know what that means. Taxes keep going up just to pay that, even if we have no more income or anything else. So I hope people keep that in mind.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments on this particular motion? If not, I guess we'll take a we'll take a vote on this. Again, I'll read the motion, again, reminding the population that it's non-binding. Shall the Richmond Housing Committee engage diverse members of the Richmond community in town-wide conversations about housing to share both the needs and options relevant to Richmond? All those in favor, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. Any other business to conduct under Article 15? I think you had, oh, he's he's disappeared on me now. We'll go we'll go down there.
Hi, Emily Mitchell. I'm bringing forth a resolution or statement that the town of Richmond shall go on record expressing its support for an immediate negotiated permanent ceasefire by both Hamas and the Israeli government, urging the release of all hostages, and calling for the urgent implementation of humanitarian aid and reparations. That is just a piece of what I've written. And that is my motion.
Thank you. Again, as presented, this would be something that the Select Board would entertain. So is there is there a second to this resolution? There's a second. Any discussion on this resolution? As the maker of the motion, you may have any additional statements you want to make.
Thank you. I just want the people here to know that, and I'll give, can you bring him a copy of this, please? Thank you. That this was, this is the moderator, that this was crafted based on the based on the city of Cambridge, Massachusetts, although I've just been getting texts that numerous Vermont towns have also passed these resolutions in the last 24 hours, including Shelburne, Thetford, New Fane, and Marshfield, to name more. Looks like there's going to be about 20 to 25 today, minimum. And that also that this was written, what's happening in the world is causing significant trauma, fear and grief among Richmond community members. I was fortunate enough to share in the writing of this with a Palestinian member of our community and a Jewish member of our community. This is affecting all of us deeply and emotionally, and I just wanted to share that with you here today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions on the resolution? Okay. Yes, ma'am, in the back.
I'm apologizing for my voice. Just commenting in total.
I'm sorry. We can't quite hear. Did you state your name?
I can take a round. I just have a little bit of a cold. Denise Noble. I wanted to express my support for the resolution. I am absolutely a pacifist, and I don't feel like killing anybody is the solution or a way to get to peace. And so I fully support it for many reasons, including the fact that it is creating trauma all around the world, but also to individuals in Richmond. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? We have one third row here.
Bonnie Stoyer. I think the intent of this as a resolution is to ask the Select Board to speak as the voice for the residents of Richmond, to bring this resolution to our congressional delegation, to add to the voices of other people throughout the state of Vermont, to ask for the ceasefire. Just as a point of clarification for the bringing of this motion to you.
Yeah, go ahead. Thank you.
Bonnie and Denise and Emily, we're looking at the motion up here, and it doesn't actually specify a request to the Select Board at all. It just says that the town, if I may, the town of Richmond go on record standing against antisemitism and Islamophobia, and calling on all Richmond residents to respect the rights of freedom and speech and peaceful protest, and to strive to treat one another with empathy, grace, and understanding, which I certainly agree with. It just is not specifically asking the Select Board to do any particular thing. That said, recently, the Vermont Legislature, quite a few members of the Legislature, both the Senate and the House, did author a very, very good resolution calling on much the same thing. And as was noted, many towns across Vermont have taken a similar stance. I ultimately, it's it's a citizen vote, so I'm not going to ask you to do one thing or another. But I do think this is something worth we're thinking about. So that's just my two cents.
Anybody else, first time around? Yes, over here.
My name is Chi Chi Barrett, and I'm asking if you would please read the resolution again, because it was not clear.
Yeah, I recognize that, and I'm struggling with that as well, because this this statement is not exactly what you had to state it. So we were, I think the assembled is is the assembled is confused about, you know, what you said to begin with was was rather brief, and I'm not sure if you want to amend that or or not.
Sure. I just I didn't, I wanted to bring this on the floor, and I can read the entire thing. I was trying to be concise and mindful of the fact that it's 2:30. And I've been here since nine.
We do recognize that, but as she's indicated.
Yes, I'm happy to do that.
There's there's a little bit of confusion as to actually what you're trying to do.
Sure. So to clarify, I agree with what Bonnie said, that that is what we are ultimately asking you to do. I'm going to read the whole thing. Here we go. We all have our listening ears on at 2:30. Here we go. All right. Whereas the town of Richmond recognizes that all human life is precious, regardless of race, religion, nationality. And whereas the horrific Hamas attacks on October 7, 2023 resulted in 1,200 Israelis killed and more than 240 people taken hostage. And whereas the Israeli government responded with indiscriminate military force, leading to the deaths of over, and when I wrote this, it's over this number now, 30,000 Palestinians, including well over 12,000 children, thousands who have been injured and millions displaced. And whereas this ongoing conflict has created a severe humanitarian crisis, leaving millions of people without basic necessities such as food, water, electricity, shelter, proper medical care. And whereas this conflict is not only impacting the international community, but is also causing significant trauma, fear, and grief amongst Richmond community members, including both Palestinian and Jewish residents. Now therefore be it resolved that the town of Richmond go on record expressing its support for an immediate negotiated permanent ceasefire by both Hamas and the Israeli government, urging the release of all hostages, and calling for the urgent implementation of humanitarian aid and reparations. And be it further resolved that the town clerk be and is hereby requested to forward a suitably engrossed copy of this resolution to the offices of the President of the United States, Joseph Biden, Senator Bernard Sanders, Senator Peter Welsh, and Congresswoman Becca Ballint. And be it further that the town of Richmond go on record standing against antisemitism and Islamophobia, and calling upon all Richmond residents to respect the rights of freedom, of speech, and peaceful protest, and to strive to treat one another with empathy, grace, and understanding.
Does that provide the clarification you were looking for? I think so. Okay. Any other questions on the resolution?
Clint?
Yes, ma'am. Right up here in front.
So we are, Virginia Clark, we are assuming that the words, this resolution causes the town to go on record, is suggesting that the Select Board do that?
But it doesn't say that.
Is that presumably what we're?
It doesn't say that. It just says, I think, I think what I think, if if I'm reading this right, that whenever we take a vote on that, that will be the record that they're looking, that this woman is looking for. I'm not sure it's asking the Select Board to do anything.
Is that what the intent was? Or is the intent for the Select Board to officially make it a town statement, or?
I think it's kind of the town to make it, town is about to make it.
Okay.
So.
What? Yeah, let's let's try to let's try to do this orderly. We'll try to answer your question first, Jay.
I just would like to point out that, noble that this resolution is, it does not actually ask for what I'm verbally hearing people say it asks for. It does not, it does not cause the Select Board to take any action. It does not even include a request to the Select Board to take an action.
It simply says a go on record.
Right. So my suggestion to my friends in the Richmond Racial Equity Committee is amend the motion so it does, if that is your wish.
Yes, ma'am. You have your hand up?
Is this on? Yeah. Patty Brushit. I don't think we need an amendment to this. This is town meeting and a resolution, and resolutions have been made numerous times during other business. Does the town, the people assembled here at town meeting, more than five people, does the town support this resolution? And that's what it says?
And really, what I think you're saying, what I was trying to say, is that by virtue of a vote, if it goes up or down, we either support it or we don't.
We either support it or we don't, and that's the way it goes.
Correct. That's the way I'm reading it. Is that that's that's okay with the maker of the motion as well? Any other question? Yes, Josh.
So thank you for that clarification. I just want to make sure that I'm clear. If it is voted in favor, then the resolution, as read by Emily, will be forwarded to the parties that she requested by the town clerk, with no further action by the Select Board. The town is making that, and then the clerk is forwarding. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Is that correct? Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? All the way in the back.
I call a question.
Well, okay. Question's been called. Is there any other? I don't think there was any other discussion, was there? Okay, good. So at the at the, could I just summarize and call it the ceasefire resolution as a subject? You're good with that? Okay, good. Okay. All those in favor of the ceasefire resolution, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no?
No.
Thank you very much. Any other business in which to transact under Article 15? Yes, ma'am.
Denise.
Denise Barnard. Based on the vote that was made today, March 7, 2024, regarding Brown's Court Park, I, Denise Biggins-Barnard, make a motion that it be used as its original intent, that it be used as its as a recreational area. From this day forward, that the town of Richmond no longer consider the 3.13 acre lot known as Brown's Court for any any other use other than recreational activity for perpetuity. Respectfully submitted.
Thank you. And you, could you bring that forward? And just reminding the folks again, as emphatic as this was, it is a non a non-binding thing. It's not a warned article. So is there, as read, is there a second to this motion? There's a second to the motion? Is there? Yes. You're going to have to use a microphone, Francis. I can't hear you. They're right there.
Could you please declare the outcome of the previous vote?
Could you please declare the outcome of the previous vote?
The vote on the ceasefire resolution.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. The ayes have it on the previous ceasefire resolution. Thank you very much. Yes, okay. All right. I, forgive me for that slip. Okay. Fire me. Anyways, so you have the, we, we have a second on this motion. Denise, as a maker of said motion, you may, you may speak first on the motion.
Thank you. During our research, after the town, the select board hired Chris Haggerty to do the survey, the survey was incredible. It has gone through four different owners, and all, and I don't even know what it's called, but all the different steps and different documents that he had to take to get to the point where he could make a, a complete survey. And when the land was given over, it was given to the village trustees. That's how long ago this land was given to the town. So I'm afraid that if we don't do something once and for all, when we have a new select board in front of us in six, eight, 10, 12 years, that we could be possibly going through the same exact thing as that we went through today. We've spent a lot of money on the survey, and we know exactly where the boundary lines are, we know what we have. And some other things came out of the survey as well. The actual Brown's Court used to be known as Recreational Way, but the road was never adopted.
Athletic Drive.
I'm sorry, Athletic Drive, excuse me. I have that. Athletic Drive. But one thing that the town has never done, they've never adopted the road Brown's Court. And there's some other housekeeping items that I won't get into right now, but the select board is aware. So I'd like to just make it clean, make it neat, so that we never have to go through this again, and that that land is conserved and preserved for recreational uses.
Just to remind people, everything moved right now is non-binding. Denise, I agree with everything you're saying, but it would be non-binding. It would not enjoin the select board. In fact, I'm not entirely sure that one select board can do something that would prevent a later select board from doing something. All we can really do is have a strong sense of the town at this point, unless we sign a legal contract or something expressly writing this in. And the resolution doesn't do that, but again, I agree with what you're saying.
Mr. Moderator, may I answer?
Oh, but, yes, please.
So I guess my question to you as a board, and to you as Mr. Moderator, and to a town clerk, what does someone need to do? Do we need to put it on the ballot in November? Do we need, you know, what do we need to do to make this happen?
Permanently, forever.
Yeah.
Good luck. You've needed a consultant attorney, I think.
Yeah, that would, I guess you're right. That would, go ahead, please, Mary.
Can you hear me now? I, I've pondered this question a little bit, and what the conversation we just had mirrors what we've had to date, that a non-binding resolution doesn't do it, a motion of the select board doesn't do it. We could even create an ordinance that says something, but a future ordinance could be changed and say something else. So the only vehicles that I know by which a piece of property is permanently enjoined is through a legal vehicle, like a conservation easement, which is a legal standing of that. And the method of doing that, including the vote on it, I'm not sure, but I think it would have to be encumbered somehow by a legal document associated with the property. Does that make sense, Linda?
Yeah, that sounds good, but I, to go back to what Jay, I think, said, that we're, what we're garnering is a sense, sense of the public, what they'd like to do. And this could be further action down the road, if you want to get, get that far. Okay, so there's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any other discussion on this motion? Okay, select board, are you ready for a sense?
Yes.
Okay. So the motion is, based on the vote made today, March the 7th, 2024, regarding Brown's Court Park, I, Denise Biggins-Barnard, make a motion that this be used in its original intent as a recreational area from this day forward, that the town of Richmond no longer consider 3.13 acre lot known as Brown's Court for any other use than recreational for perpetuity. Okay? Okay. All those in favor of said, oh, a point of order. Yes, please.
I think you read the date wrong. Today's the 5th. Yes, she wrote 7th.
She wrote the 7th. She and I both went to Mount Mansfield Unit High School, so we'll have to, we'll have to figure that one out. Anywho, having read the, and thank you, Mary, for that point, having read the, the motion, all those in favor of said motion, please so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no?
No.
Okay. Francis, the ayes have it. Okay. Any other business to, under Article 15, for the first time around? Okay. Yes, ma'am, right there.
Lauren Esserman again. I just, a brief comment, I don't, I don't know the intention to make a motion specifically. I just wanted to offer kind of an counterpoint to something that was said earlier, when we were going through some of the earlier articles about supporting some social service organizations, that in counterpoint to the suggestion that maybe we don't put any of that into town funding. I, I think it's actually really great. I'm really glad that we do broaden our support. These are social services that serve all of us when we need them, and most of us don't need them most of the time, but sometimes we do. And I think it's a very small amount of money, and I'm really happy that we're, like, we're supporting those in a broad community way, as opposed to relying on the generosity of a few people who have foresight and, you know, willing to be generous with certain organizations. So I'm not at all in favor of us thinking about taking away that funding in the future. I just wanted to say that. I don't know if that requires any kind of motion.
I, I think you just stating that is good for your opinion.
All right. And then just adjacent to that is, also, I don't think the suggestion of thinking about just our community careers camp as the hyper local, I don't think dividing it as local or, or countywide, regional is a, a good way to look at it. I think our community camps is great, and I totally support it, that we're supporting that. I also think that we benefit from having, being part of a county that has services in the county. I'm very glad that we're supporting that as well. So I, I would like to just dissuade us from thinking in, in those hyper local terms.
Thank you. Is there any other business under Article 15 for the first time around? Ms. Denise, go ahead.
The discussion on Brown's Court ended so quickly that I just wanted to make sure this got into the record for town meeting day. Mr. Brian Godfrey, who's our physical education teacher, and has done a two-page letter, which I'm not going to read, but I would like to introduce it, and maybe we could put it on the web or something, about how he and his students use Brown's Court Park on numerous occasions for numerous activities. And he took the time to write a two-page letter, and I didn't need to share it, but I just want to make sure it gets noted, that it's here, and make sure that all the select board get a copy for their records.
Good. Thank you. Any other business under Article 15? All right, before everybody gets up, Art, thank you. We're, we're about to wrap up, but most of the time, you folks are great at picking up chairs. There is a process to put the chairs away, so we'll have to, we'll have to have one of the scouts help you, because you can't put them to, you've got to put them on the lower ring. Before I entertain a, anything about adjournment, there is a couple of items. Jay?
Okay, so I want to thank you all for sticking through all the way to quarter till three, and I know you all want to get out of here. But I would like just to, here as we're starting to wrap up, to thank Mr. Jeff Forward, whose term on the select board ends with the end of this meeting, and he will be replaced by one of two candidates. So if you haven't voted, please do vote. Jeff has put in a ton of work over the last couple of years, not just as a select board member, but also as chair of the town center committee. I also want to thank, I'm going to call out. I also want to put a couple other people on the spot, because I don't think they get enough recognition. Pete Goslin. Hey, Pete. We recovered from the second flood back in July far faster than anybody except for probably Pete and his guys expected. He's got some damn good people working for him, and we should be very grateful for all, for all of them.
Thank you.
And I'm going to single one other person out, but I want to say I thank all of our town employees, the admin staff, the planning staff, highway, water and sewer, police, everybody. They all do amazing jobs. We're lucky to have them. But I want to call out our water and sewer superintendent, Steve Coat, over here. He has, if you've not been coming. When Steve became water and sewer superintendent, he inherited a plant that was in bad need, dire need of extreme maintenance, and he has brought that, he and his guys have brought that plant back from the brink. And we are in a much better place now than we were this time a year ago, and we owe a huge percentage of that to Steve.
Thank you.
And I wanted to remind everybody, if you have a four-legged animal that you call a dog living with you, or one, or two, or three of them, by state law, they should be registered in the town where they live by April 1st. This being the first week of March, we've registered a whole 50 dogs. So there's a law out there, we figure there's probably 600 dogs in this town. For those who need to know where a rabies clinic is, Huntington and Richmond Town Clerks are sponsoring one Saturday, March 23rd, 9 o'clock to noon, at the Huntington Garage and the Huntington Town Garage, which is located behind their fire station, and it's simply a $20 payment for each rabies shot you get. And then, on a very serious note, you'll notice that you did not, the people here today did not receive a ballot for the Mount Mansfield Unified Union School District. Really. So they, anybody that had voted before the decision was made to change the annual meeting got one sent to them. Those will be held aside, and they really haven't decided what will happen with them, but probably simply be recycled. Everybody that asked for a ballot be sent to them, or voted in the office, or voted here today, will receive a new ballot in the mail starting March 15th. And these are going to be a different-looking envelope. It's more of a number 10 envelope, but it still says that it's a ballot, and you have to sign the inner envelope and return it to me. And that meaning, if you want to come in person and do your voting, and by chance you didn't get a ballot, the voting will be at the town clerk's office on April 2nd, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And we hope everybody gets out. That includes your school board officers and your budget, and a question whether they can borrow money.
And on the, I just, a nod to the scout troop from Troop 23 here in Richmond, who provided all the color guard and the microphones, and they actually did all the, they did all the setup yesterday as well, and it's, it's always encouraging to see young people at this point. They may have been bored once or twice, but they, they will be the voters of tomorrow. So we appreciate the fact that they have joined us as well. And with that, having completed all the warrant articles for the town meeting, I would ask for a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Mary. Is there a second to that? All those in favor so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no? We are adjourned. You're welcome. You're welcome.